So it looks like we're ready to go, so why don't we go ahead and we'll call it the order. Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning for our city council work sessions. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Tatum?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Blad?
Here. Thank you. Agenda item two is Animal Shelter Advisory Board update. Representatives from the Animal Shelter Advisory Board will discuss the board's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kelly Boudry. I'm a member of the Shelter Advisory Board. I'm standing in for Dan Linehan this morning because he couldn't make it.
Josh Lines, Pocatello Shelter Director.
Okay, just briefly going over the goals. We have two major goals in the organization is to educate the public about the animal shelter itself, the animal treatment and safety, and also networking with stakeholders all through this. Now, we have projects, ongoing projects that are specific.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
I'll probably send back.
I'm sorry, thank you.
No, no problem. We have several projects going on. One is really almost will help us facilitate reaching these goals, and that's a five-year strategic plan. In this five-year strategic plan, we have items, it's items associated with educating the public and network facilities in addition to everything that needs to, the shelter needs to achieve before it can reach a no-kill status. That is the outstanding goal of the, that's the overall outstanding goal of the five-year plan. In addition, there's the community cat program that's currently underway that you're well aware of now, and we're working with Josh to make sure that, you know, the public itself has got, understands what that program is and how we can make that program better right now. Any more to say about that, Josh?
No, we've, we've reached our number for the TNR project that was given to us by best friends. We still have funding left over, so we're continuing the program until May. There is discussions with them, ongoing discussions, monthly, actually bi-weekly discussions that we have with them, updating them what's going on. So we've reached our limit, but we're still doing the program. So, and it's done fantastic. We've, we've reduced the amount of cats in the building, which is great. I mean, we've never had this, this low of an cats in our building. I think it has to do with a little bit of holding other cities and counties and everybody responsible and they're not bringing all their stuff in, and then a little bit of COVID, I'm guessing, and then the TNR. So, we're seeing fantastic, I mean, the, the numbers that we have in our shelters is just, I haven't seen them this low.
Roger, could you refresh our memory as to what your target was?
It was 315, and we've, we've surpassed that. And we even actually, we, at one point in time, we stopped doing the trapping because of COVID, where we were COVID, but we were still having people bring us cats in, and we were accepting those and putting them through the program. So, we're, now that we're back into the new stage, our, our TNR coordinator's going out, she's talking with people, and we're gonna start trapping in those high areas again.
So how many have, how many, 315 was the goal?
315 was the goal. We're, we're about, I don't want to put you wrong, we're over, we're about 320 to 325.
Okay.
So, but not like, again, we, we quit trapping, we just were taking stuff in.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the city ordinances go, one of, the only ordinance we're really addressing right now is basically the, the policy of the number of allowed dogs for one particular owner. And I don't know if Dan has come for the council to discuss this, probably not yet, but that's, that's another project we're working on.
I think he's submitting that to be an agenda item down the road.
So prepare us for what may be coming to us.
Well, I think.
I can, yeah, I can, so right now, the city code is if you have three or more dogs, so if you have two, you're okay, but if you have three or more, you have to have a multiple animal housing permit. And in order to get that, you have to have 75% of your neighbors within 100 feet of your property line to sign a, not a petition, but a, an application saying that they're okay, that your neighbors are okay to have that many dogs at your residence. So it's a, it's a misdemeanor if you don't have that inside the city, and this is, this has been a, this has been a, an issue before. I believe they brought it up before the, the council years, some years ago, and it was denied then, so I think they're just revisiting now. Everybody would like to see, I have questions, I'm kind of pro and con, I'm not convinced one way or another personally, but a lot, a lot of people would like to see it move from two dogs to three dogs, people being able to have three dogs, and there's, there's reasons behind it, so. Yes.
I read about that in the minutes also, and just to kind of give you a little sense of maybe my opinion on that, I would be opposed to increasing that. I think there's a good reason to, to have that requirement, and so just throwing that out there for consideration.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm probably coming from a different place. So I think you're gonna get, you'll get a mixed, mixed reception, and there may be some compromise in the sense that, you know, perhaps three Great Danes is different than, than three Chihuahuas.
Sure, sure.
Definitely the Chihuahuas would not went out on the three Great Danes. Roger? I guess I would need to know more than just a feeling, what is the data driver on it? And there's gotta be some studies about the potential of, of how many, how much three dogs get excited compared to four dogs get excited. It seems to me like you can get to a pack mentality somewhere.
Yeah.
And I don't know that, but I would hope that you guys in your kind of more expert positions would look at something like that, so we would be in a position to kind of look at it impartially.
And that's gonna go down to, yes, there could be a pack mentality, but it'd also go down to your training with the animal, how much interaction you actually have with the animal. I mean, you can, you can come up to a pack of super friendly animals if, if they're well cared for and they're, and they're given that time, and people work with them, or if you get some that's, people just have animals to have animals, which happens, I mean, boarding cases, you know, and they're not cared, or they're not being trained or, or cared for properly, you're gonna get that pack mentality. So, we can look into studies, but as far as like, multiple animal housing permits, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but we work on those all the time.
I'm just saying that there's, there's probably something out there that says, in terms of training, what you have to be aware of, the more animals you may be caring for.
Okay.
Claudia? So what, what is the concern? Is it noise? Is it, what's, what's the concern?
My concern?
Well, what's, what's the concern?
Generally.
Generally, with two v. three?
So the, the matter of care given, obviously people have, some people can get better care than others, just financially, not, not to mention area as well, how much side, how much room you actually have for the animal. Like having, let's say, three Great Danes in an apartment that don't get out, that, that's probably not, probably not something good for that animal to be kept up in, right? As opposed to someone who has acreage that might be able to be able to.
So could it go from childcare to dog care, basically?
Yeah, yeah, right? So, I mean, that's kind of one of the general concerns, and it's just a matter of, when, what, what number is enough? Like, what, when do you say enough is enough, right? We, maybe we approve three, and then a couple years down the line, someone's like, well, I think four should be okay too, so we've approved three, so let's go with four. I, there, there is always that, there's always that question, what, what number is enough? And, and some people will think, well, you can have five, and I can take care of them, and everything's okay. And some people think, well, you shouldn't have more than two. It's, it's kind of a, it's an opinion, really.
Right, so I'm just wondering why we're passing an ordinance, why we're considering an ordinance based on individual opinions?
So there's a, the concern.
What do, what do, if somebody's got three Great Danes, and the neighbors don't like the thought of that, then according to what you said previously, then, then that person, whether they have an acre or not, or whether they live in an apartment and can take care of them, if the neighbors aren't happy with it, then, then it's based on feeling. I'm just, I'm just wondering. I mean, the guy behind me keeps his dog on a chain 24/7/365. To me, that's offensive.
That's actually against the law.
That's off, well, I've talked about it, and I was told that as long as a dog has shelter and shade, that it's not against the law.
There's a tether, we actually have a tether in law, so.
So, but.
I'd be more than happy to check into it.
But anyway, my point is, is why are we considering an ordinance that is based on individual feelings? If, if somebody has eight dogs, and they're being neglected and not taken care of, then I get it. Then, then individually approach that home and say, you're not taking care of these eight dogs. Likewise, the guy who has one dog and doesn't take care of it.
Sure.
So I, I guess I'm just confused why we're considering an ordinance that's gonna be based on individual people's feelings about something.
It's not that we're considering ordinance, the ordinance exists. We're addressing the ordinance to see what's appropriate to change it. Your arguments are really valid. I mean, why do, is there an ordinance? And to be honest, we don't know why there's an ordinance. We don't have the history to tell us why we made these limitations initially. That's why we're readdressing them, for those exact reasons.
Okay, well, I gave you a hint where I'm coming from.
So, I mean, and there's, there are also, one of the things that was brought up when, when they had this meeting was the circumstances. So like, a family member passes away, or somebody, somebody can't take care of an animal, and another family ends up with it. And rather than take it to the shelter or get rid of it, they keep it in their family, and now that puts them over excess of the three. So that's kind of where they're coming from. Well, in certain circumstances, they should be able to have this dog without having to get a permit because of the circumstance. So that's, that's, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, finish your statement.
So that's kind of where, that was one of the arguments it was, is, is when they voted on bringing it forward to the.
Well, and I think, I think it's kind of like so many other things, one size doesn't fit all.
Sure.
And so, and I'm, I, I know it's, you can't write an ordinance in minute detail to cover every eventuality, but I also know that with thought and skill, you can write an ordinance that includes processes to consider extraordinary circumstances. And so the amount of space available, for example, could be, A, you need to meet these requirements. You know, we, we do that for all kinds of licensing, and in a sense, this is a license. And so I, you know, I think, I think there's a way, that's what I mean, compromise. I mean, I don't necessarily think this has to be a one-size-fits-all situation. And I also agree that if I just don't like animals, and I don't want my, any of my neighbors to have an animal just because I don't think people ought to have pets, I'm not clear that that should impinge on my capacity to have, you know, X number of dogs that are well taken care of.
Sure.
Because that's where the opinion piece comes in. And to me, you know, we need to at least make an effort to have some verifiable criteria that we go by, and then a process that is clear and upfront, transparent about what happens if, for example, you know, which would be true of one dog. If one dog is outside barking all day, that's not okay. And if four dogs are outside barking all day, that's equally not okay. So I'm, I'm not sure that it's, I mean, I just think there's a way forward that could be a compromise and workable.
So I want to go ahead and just interrupt here. This is an update here.
Right.
They're gonna bring this back to us. We can have a 16-hour discussion on what an ordinance should or shouldn't look like at that point. I'd like you to finish the ordinance, or finish the, the update, and if there's any other questions, the council, let's do that. But we've got, I mean, we're not, we're not preparing an ordinance. You haven't even suggested that we start preparing an ordinance. You're talking about what it looks like, from what I understand, and, and if you need to adjust that. And so, so let's just, let's move on with this, and then we'll, we'll go from there. And if we, if it comes up, we'll be back, you'll be back in front of us, and we'll have this discussion at that point.
Thank you.
That's all I have unless there's other questions.
Oh, that's all you have. I thought you had more. All right, then, I would follow that. Any other questions, council?
Thank you.
Just, Josh, if there's, if this comes up in an ordinance, then, then we need, just need to get it on a, another study session so that we can have this discussion that we've had.
Yeah.
And stuff like that. And, and council, it sounds to me like, knowing that they're doing this, if you have a, a concern or that you would like something considered in an ordinance, if they're going to suggest that, Councilwoman Stevens is our, is the liaison, and I would recommend just reaching out to her and just giving her some suggestions if you might have something for that. Roger? I just want to say that the early results seem like the TNR program is a very good success for us.
I agree with you.
Okay.
I would agree, yes.
I think the other thing, Kelly, you mentioned it, but I, I think the import of it is, is pretty significant, that the, the work on creating a strategic plan. And one of the, one of the opportunities that that creates is to get feedback and input from all the animal-concerned organizations in town, so that hopefully it creates a platform for beginning to work more collaboratively and not in quite such a siloed way, which I always think is, is good. And the other thing it does, for the friends of the animal shelter, it allows that organization and, and the board to plan financially, and, and say, okay, you know, two years from now, we want to set aside enough money to be able to do this big project or that big project. And it also helps that organization with its fundraising, because then in terms of general fundraising appeals, but also specific fundraising appeals, it's, it's possible to show that we're very organized, and it's also possible to let people earmark their money for specific projects that speak to them and so forth. So, you know, it's an easy thing to say, oh, and by the way, we're doing a five-year strategic plan, and yet, as I say, I think the ramifications and potential around that are, are pretty significant.
Sounds good. Okay, well, thank you very much. I just might put a plug in for you because I'm certain you've got it in your notes somewhere and you just forgot to, to read it, but the Run With The Big Dogs event is going to be happening again this year, and.
Yes.
Pretty excited about Friends working on that and doing some things. That's gonna be happening on, on 24th, April 24th. Is that?
Yeah.
That's what your notes say, right?
I wasn't gonna talk about that, anything with the Friends with the.
I just, just wanted to put a plug in there for that, so.
Yeah.
There will be social distancing and all that stuff. They're getting their plans put together right now, so. Thank you very much. Thank you for everything that you do. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to agenda item number three is the Child Care Advisory Committee update. Representatives from the Child, Child Care Advisory Committee will discuss the committee's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
I'll try to be louder now. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Members of the city council and Mayor Blad, my name is Corey Lewis. I've been the chair of the Child Care Advisory Board since 2019, and I've been an owner of a childcare center in Pocatello for 15 years. I rely on the information that comes through the committee to keep up to date on changes made concerning all aspects of childcare, including new licensing changes, changes to the code, as well as any changes that come from the Idaho Child Care Program and Idaho Stars. These changes directly affect the childcare providers in our area. In the past, the committee provided three free trainings per year. This, of course, has changed this past year due to COVID. Idaho Stars has been providing free trainings online for all childcare staff, preschool teachers, et cetera. This year, we're planning to change our focus to include educating our community on why early childhood education is so important for our young children. We're also planning to provide information about what the committee does and why we do it, the reasons behind the childcare codes, and the importance of providing high quality to our children. While we absolutely believe that health and safety of our children is the most important, we would like to look into other aspects of quality care, such as intentional play, outdoor play, social interaction, kindergarten readiness, as well as parents, parents advocating for their young children. We would like to see the quality of care go up in our area. Parents need childcare in order to provide for their families, and this care should be the best it can be for our children. Due to COVID, the childcare community has had many opportunities to receive grant monies that have kept a lot of centers from closing. However, most providers are still struggling to hire qualified staff, which adds to the problem of quality in our centers. We want to help providers to find and retain quality staff. We have a lot of work ahead of us if we want to provide what's best for the youngest members of our community to thrive. I'd like to thank you for your continued support of the Child Care Advisory Board and your interest in providing quality care for the children in the area.
Roger? Nationally, there's been a great emphasis on childcare.
You want me to discuss that?
Childcare, childcare facilities.
Yes.
And the stress that's been on them. You've mentioned some of it with the struggling to find appropriate workers.
Yes.
I'm aware of a couple places that I believe have closed because of this, because.
There's been 10.
And I think, I, I think there's also, the enrollment school is down because people are keeping their kids home. Can you tell me what our impact is locally that way?
Are you gonna talk about that?
Not in particular.
Okay.
I didn't address that.
Well, a lot of parents are keeping their kids home, so there has been about 10 centers that have closed.
In town?
Uh huh, in Pocatello. I know at my center, we, we were essential. We stayed open even if we had only 30 kids, which we're used to 120 kids. And so trying to keep your staff on payroll and pay them with no money coming in, I mean, the PPP grant was great, and the grants from Idaho Stars. And also now, they're coming up with a grant with Idaho Stars that's directly for staff. So it's a staff enhancement grant, in which it would go through the owner, director, but the, each staff member would get $300 a month for a year. So that's how Idaho Stars is trying to get more quality providers in our centers.
So it's a money issue, getting quality people, or is?
Yes, because normally, it's minimum wage for these teachers, and they work very, very, very hard. It's all about money. I mean, the parents need to pay more money for childcare and staff fees to pay money.
It's been many, many years since I paid for childcare, so what's, what's an average for, like, say, one, one child?
Maybe for an infant?
Sure.
Okay, between 600 and 800?
Which is extremely low. Idaho has one of the lowest rates for children. Like, eight years ago, I lived in Indiana, and I charged $1,000 for an infant a month.
And so what about a five-year-old?
A five-year-old at my center was about 450, which, how much was it in Indiana?
Yeah, a lot higher, probably around 700.
And is that, is that Monday through Friday, 8 to 5?
Yep.
Kind of time?
8 to 6:30, 7 to 6:30, with preschool.
Have the existing childcare facilities absorbed the people from the tenant closed, or?
I think so. A lot of parents.
Transferred, but that's when I am talking to childcare providers, that is their biggest complaint, is not finding reliable help and not being able to keep employees on that they can trust with the kids. And that is, and I have, in fact, they have one call, probably once a week, to see if an application has gone through so they can get them hired and started, because they have to keep within their ratio of employee per child.
So do you, just because you're our advisory group, do you think that there's been more, what I would say, underground childcare?
Absolutely.
Developing because of this, you know, where people are taking care of kids that really don't have a license?
Yes.
All of that stuff?
I will say that statewide, we have seen a lot more facilities joining our RISE system, which is our online childcare system across the state. And part of that could be because of the $300 per employee that is gonna be given per month. So I'm hopeful that that will encourage some of the places that have employees to not be underground, and the other employees here that they're, you know, if they're not underground, they're getting these extra $300 a month. So we have seen an increase in facilities across the state joining, so I, I hope that that kind of thing happens here, too.
One follow-up. It, it would be real hard for us, I think, to go and look at all the quote underground facilities right now. I think we still ought to be engaged, because I, I think the regulations we have in place is for the safety of the child. But coming out of this, if we start coming out of this, we ought to probably be more diligent about advertising what kind of care people should be seeking for their child. I don't know all the regulations about what you can write off. I would think that you can't write off childcare if you're not in a certified facility, but I don't know that. You know, just some stuff like that, because somewhere we gotta return the children to the protection of the, the ordinances we have in place. Chris?
Yeah, what if any lobbying efforts are underway with the legislature, because as with so many things, for those of us who, through education, work opportunity, whatever the circumstances might be, home we were born into, you know, we're privileged enough to be able to afford, you know, six to 800 dollars, I mean, that's with one child, this is with one child. But especially in a city like Pocatello, where 40-plus percent of our population is living a pretty economically stringent lifestyle, that they don't have money around the edges, after a roof and a way to get to work and some food, that's pretty much it. And they're, they're not gonna be able to afford it. And so I, I agree that we want kids to be in quality facilities, but on the other hand, in all honesty, for many, many people, it's like, okay, do I work, or do I stay home and somehow magically create food and shelter? Or do I let my neighbor take care of my kid in an unlicensed situation, because then at least I can put a roof over their head and food in their mouth? And so I, I believe that as a state, we need, we need to take a serious look at this, and I'm pretty, I don't, I don't know how that could happen if we're gonna turn down $6 million for early childhood, despite all the research that says, you know, that's gonna create a productive, tax-paying person, very likely. I, I don't, but I'm just curious, you know, what, what, how, how could we try to make a dent in this problem?
So I would like to address that, and sorry, we were gonna present and introduce ourselves, so I didn't get a chance to do that. So before I address that, I would like to say thank you, City Council and Mayor Blad, for inviting us here today to give an update. And my name's Laura Thomas, and I am the CCRC Director across the state. I oversee all the regional childcare resource and referral offices, and I am a member of the Pocatello Child Care Advisory Committee, and I would like to address that. Part of the things I wanted to say today, and Corey did touch on it, is that we really would like to have an education piece this year. Education piece for our childcare providers, for our families, for those in our community. I believe that families should have choice in whether their children go to preschool or childcare or stay at home. And, you know, across the state, we really believe that parents should have that choice. It's not that one thing is absolutely better than the other, but we do have a. It's not that one thing is absolutely better than the other, but we do have a lot of families that would like to have quality care and can't afford it. So as, you know, as you mentioned, $6 million was turned down. Some of those funds were going to give children slots to help them with kindergarten readiness. And the first phase of that grant is already happening right now, and some of those slots may be taken away if we don't see that that money gets through. So I think there was a big misconception about what that money was about and that really a lot of that money was controlled by local collaboratives and not the state or not an organization. There's no particular curriculum that is being, you know, pushed with that money. It's all about local control and the, the local communities doing, you know, what they want to do with that money. So I think really education, just in the communities is a big piece. Thank you.
Claudia?
So I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that the, the workers are basically working for minimum wage?
Yes, in childcare, people do not get paid what they're, what they're worth or the work that they put in.
So people are working for, what's minimum wage, 725?
Sometimes with a bachelor's degree.
So, so it's cost prohibitive for the parents, but it's also cost prohibitive for the employee because who can live on that?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was...
Roger. One thing, I do believe there's an assistance program for low-income families that helps pay for childcare. Could you elaborate on that just a little bit?
Yes, it's the Idaho Childcare Program called ICCP, and it helps working families. So you can't have a parent at home and take advantage of it. Either you have to, you know, both parents or if it's a single parent home, they have to be working and they, it helps them to have care while they're at work.
What, what kind of support is, I mean monetarily and dollar-wise, give or take, just an estimate?
The income limits actually did go up. COVID, because of COVID and because some families were struggling, those income limits did go up. I can't tell you exactly what they are. I mean, you know, it's a variety, whether there's so many in the family and, and that kind of thing. But a lot of our families on that line of just barely making enough, but not really in poverty, still struggle to pay for childcare and often there's not something for them that's available.
Well, and that's ironic too, given the fact that part of the reason for, or one person's reason for turning down the $6 million was that it would encourage women to work. And yet the current program, you can't have a parent at home. And so the logic, the comparison is missing.
Okay, any other questions? Super, thank you. Thank you very much for everything you do and for helping us watch out for the children of Pocatello for sure and everywhere else, so thank you.
And I'd like to just say as the liaison that, you know, coming from essentially a K-12 program and being focused on middle school, I mean, I, I was not really all that knowledgeable. And this group of folks and the time and effort and thought that goes into creating the programs, I am, as, as a retired educator, I am really impressed when they have a whole different perspective on, on childcare. And so it's, it's been, you've educated me and I thank you for that opportunity.
Super, thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda item number four is Pocatello Development Authority update. Represented as from the Pocatello Development Authority, PDA, we'll discuss the PDA's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, first let me introduce myself. I am David Giorial, and I am the new Chair of the PDA. And before anything else, I want to express an apology to all of you because we had up until yesterday been preparing a deck that was to be presented here this morning. And I have no idea, Mr. Mayor, where that deck is. I have no idea where Brent McLean is. I have nothing to afford me the opportunity to detail the accomplishments, the PDA in the previous year before I took over. And so it creates a really difficult position for me that in an innocuous way reminds me of the best Truman quote, that it's very embarrassing to be put on the spot, those quotes. But nonetheless, Mr. Mayor, unless there's a recommendation that we move the item forward in the agenda till later on, or that we find some sort of successful means to take that deck and present it to each member here electronically later this afternoon I have the time. And I'd be more than welcome at that juncture to entertain any and all questions that may arise out of that presentation on an individual basis. So I submit that to you for consideration.
David, why don't we, why don't we do this? Would you, we, we will jump ahead to our police quarterly update. If you would walk back to Brent's office and see if he has forgotten where he is and then we'll, oh, looks like he's walking in right now. So we won't have to do that. Looks like you got something hot off the press there.
Yeah, I just wasn't printing well, so.
Thank you. Just while we're doing this, can you tell me the order in which TIF investors get paid off?
Thank you.
Is it city, county, per North Gate?
I, I think we have that description contained.
Okay, because I've been trying to get that and it's, it's been...
Yeah, and I honestly think that's, did you bring your copy? I think that's a very legitimate and fair question, but I think the, the idea was to try to describe that here just we can't.
Perfect, thank you.
And then anything that's not directly addressed to that question, I'd be more than glad to entertain. Welcome.
Sorry, it's one of those mornings.
Anyway, I, I don't know that it's adequate also, Mr. Mayor, unless for your consideration, the, the, the deck document itself can probably be digested in about five minutes. If we would like to continue with this as we go through the deck and/or we can move it up on the order of the rest of the calendar so we don't submit them to any delays.
Why don't we, since we've got you both here right now, why don't we go ahead and maybe Brent can speak a little bit to the PDA? I know David was put into an, in a tough situation. I think you, you were elected to be the Chair of the PDA three weeks ago.
Yeah.
I think. And I know you've been working on, on that, but that's, Brent, you've been here for a little while.
Sure.
And then we, any questions between the Brent, David, Heidi and myself who can probably help get through this?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a good recommendation.
So the, in the report that we have, just real quickly and briefly, there are currently four districts. And if you look in the executive summary, you can see what those four districts are. The most recent one, the North Gate District, is the only one that hasn't had any increment at this point. It's still in process of, of developing to the point where we start to get increment. Hopefully in this next year, we will, with this next tax cycle, start to see some of that come in. Some of the highlights of, of this past year included paying off an amount owed to the city of Pocatello for the purchase of the Hoku property. That property was sold and, and the reimbursement back to the city was, was finalized, and so that is, is now done. Also, there's been some public improvements made on that site as far as infrastructure. The other item to, to note is the, out in the airport district, Frigitech LLC has started workout in, in the airport area. It's a large freezer storage facility, and they broke ground last July. They've made a lot of progress in infrastructure out there and roadway improvements and things of that nature. So that is an, an exciting development that PDA is involved with as well. I don't want to go into too much detail on, on some of those things, but if you look further in the, in the report, provided a map of Pocatello and the area and highlighted where those districts are. I think it's important to recognize how much of the land within Pocatello is, is actually in a TIF district. It's not that significant of an amount. So while they, it are a small area in, in relation to the, the total land size of, of Pocatello, they are significant in the economic impact that they have on, on our community and helping to drive jobs, drive the economy in Pocatello. And, and so as you go through the report, each district has a, a brief summary of what's happening, what improvements have happened, and the value that they're adding as far as jobs, what kind of employment. Most of these districts provide manufacturing-type jobs, and they're essential to the economic growth of, of Pocatello. If you have any other questions or comments, I'm happy to entertain those.
I have one question. I need to phrase this appropriately because I'm kind of a lone wolf in this area, except I have a lot of people in the community that think according with me. The Profile of Development Authority, as you read it, it says it was formed out of urban renewal law of 1965 in the Local Development, Local Economic Development Act. It seems like the Pocatello Development Authority has morphed more into the urban renewal component than, than to have a balance with economic development and to understand what that does to our community. I, I really have felt like whenever we are going to do something, we need to know how it's going to impact all of Pocatello and is not just going to perform within the confines of a TIF district. I, I pushed last time when we were doing the North Gate Development to say, have you studied? And they wouldn't study. The PDA would not do anything of an analysis of what the potential could be to Pocatello. And I just don't think that it's at that stand alone. It comes under the onus of Pocatello itself, and there's got to be some relationship there. It's not a standalone urban renewal effort. It's an economic development effort that should be on behalf of all of us, not just some of us. So I just need to throw that comment out because I, I think there's confusion as to exactly what the role is, particularly when it's got an economic development subtitle, so to speak. But it spends a lot of effort solely on urban renewal.
I think it's just important to remember that the urban renewal agencies have to operate within the urban renewal agencies. They can't be doing all economic development for the whole region or the whole city. So while what they do definitely plays a role in economic development, for example, it's great that Frigitech is building out there. That's an economic boon for our area. We still have to rely on, we've got Ready here today and Bannock Development for some of those other economic development activities.
But it operates under the title of Pocatello Development Authority. It has an economic substructure to it that has to be beyond just urban renewal. Urban renewal has to function under them, but I don't think that's their total job as PDA.
Well, it says here they were in accordance with urban renewal law and Local Economic Development Act, so that's not a, one to the exclusion of the area.
Well, like I said, they still play a role in economic development, but the...
I've been on it, but it used to be different.
Okay, well, the PDA's council has recently advised that they kind of stick to the urban renewal activities.
Well, in the last few years, let's just, let's not forget, the last few years, Pocatello Development Authority spent a lot of money in our downtown area helping Blight and solving problems there. They've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars there making the downtown area safer and better and being able to help save and protect the buildings and the facilities down there. And so it does not only do economic development. Now, Pocatello Development Authority in the newspaper and everybody talks about the economic development piece of it more, but there's definitely an urban development and urban renewal area part of this, this group. And so we spent a lot of money in fixing and helping and repair in the urban renewal area, but that money has also, is generated in the, from the TIF districts, and the money is supposed to be spent within the TIF districts is where it's supposed to be spent. However, when you have some put in the general fund that is not being used, then you can use it in some of those areas like the, the downtown area, and that's what we've done. The council over the last year has said, we need to re, to refocus and relook, and so I know the Pocatello Development Authority Board is looking at how they're going to and how they're, what that will look like going into the future and what, what that looks like. But the hands are tied depending on what part and where you're looking at throughout this, the city and, and stuff. And Heidi's absolutely right, it's supposed to be spent within an urban renewal district is where that money is supposed to be focused on. And so that's, that's just something for this council to consider is, is, it, it does that, it just doesn't get the great big headlines in the paper that we replaced a couple roofs in downtown and things like that.
Roger, then Chris, then Claudia. I would like to have a financial report to know where money has gone, you know, kind of a history so that when you come in, you know, there's some stuff here, but I'd like to know where, how much was spent in Old Town, for example. The other thing I would speak to is the fact that there's been a transition away from accumulating the administrative fees to be used, like the mayor's talking about, that where the city was willing to not charge for that administration directly and indirectly and to accumulate an account where the funds were then able to be reallocated away from the city. But because they were not directly tied to the TIF districts because of the administration portal that it went through, we could use it more expansively in Pocatello. And I would just like to see where all that has gone in the last few years.
So Brent, why don't you make a note that we can get the council a financial report?
Yeah, absolutely, can do that.
That's, that's very easy to do. Chris?
Yeah, I, please take this as a comment or comments from an ally versus, versus someone who's... Some years ago, I attended a PDA meeting just literally to find out what in the heck the PDA did. And walked out of that meeting disappointed because the entire conversation was around, are we going to actually require people who haven't lived up to the conditions of their loan to repay their loans, or are we just going to write them off? And I walked out as a citizen and thought, wow, wow, that's pretty scary. And so I, my view is that there are some fundamental issues around PDA. I don't know the inner workings of it, but I know there's been a significant amount of sort of unexplained turnover recently in some of the board positions, and there didn't seem to be a lot of enthusiasm around, you know, people wanting to necessarily step forward and fill those positions. So I would like to see PDA really, really make sure that its inner structure is clear and strong and focused, and then once that happens, then I would like to see that communicated to the public. Because in all honesty, even as a council member, and it's not that I haven't tried, I haven't just sat back and, you know, said, "Come to me and tell me." I mean, I've spent time and effort trying to understand PDA, and I think there's a huge communication problem, huge communication problem, which I think serves no one. It's not good for PDA, it's not good for the public. So I'm wondering, and I would like to see, again, some sort of more information-based collaboration between council and PDA. Because, for example, our beautification project, which didn't really, I wasn't on council, but it didn't really work out, it didn't generate the list that was hoped for. But in a lot of these areas are also areas that could use some visual improvement. And I don't know where or how or if any of that sort of collaborative coordinated focus can happen. So my first specific suggestion is, I would really recommend that PDA meetings be streamed and archived so that the public has at least an opportunity, if they're willing to put in the work, to try to understand more. And I think to Roger's point, where, you know, when a TIF is paid off and, you know, there's a bump, how, where, and when does that money get dispersed? Because at the end of the day, you know, a lot of that is sort of taxpayer money. I mean, it's public money, and I think the public would appreciate being able to know what happened with their money. Then I'm, but I think taping the meetings and having available minutes and all of that sort of thing, and I don't know that that would be prohibited. I mean, I don't know why there couldn't either be a spot on the city website that's, you know, a link to something else. Other cities do that sort of thing. Anyway, then the other thing that I just was wondering about is the Naval Ordinance District. Because again, thinking about beautification, I mean, from when I drive into Pocatello, I mean, there's that big rusting hulk of a building that I can see. And it's, is there any, is there any opportunity via PDA? And again, I simply don't know. Because when you drive past that thing, it's no offense to anybody who owns it or does business there, but it is not attractive. It does not look well cared for. You get off the highway and the first thing you see is that rusting, as I say, hulk, and you think, what? So I think that's an issue. And then I don't know, and I don't expect you to answer this, but I think we have to think about what if any significant impact the recent announcement that the Idaho Falls Airport is clearly surging forward. Now, I know that had to do with passengers, but vibrant, vital, growing airports also attract business, et cetera, et cetera. And so somehow, I think in all of these considerations, I think we need to be thinking about our airport and whether or not with this surge in Idaho Falls, what does that mean for us? I mean, are we really destined to be a passenger airport? I don't know. But, and I, but that is one of these, the airport area is one of these districts, and I think we need to consider the fact that Idaho Falls is kind of burning us at the moment. Again, that's based on passengers, and I don't, you know, I'm not an airport expert. But I think there are some complicated things that we have to consider, and I think it starts with PDA clarifying or helping the public and the rest of us understand, what is PDA? Who are they? What do they do? Where does the money go, et cetera.
Claudia?
So I'm kind of kind of thinking back a little bit with regard to communication, because I've had a number of residents over the years, way before I got on council, the conversations regarding the Northgate TIF district has come up. And people don't understand, and quite frankly, it's pretty clear here, it says to qualify under urban renewal law to be categorized as deteriorated or deteriorating for it to be an urban renewal district. And so a lot of people are wondering how undeveloped land was blighted, deteriorating, do you know what I mean, and to become a TIF. So I think with regard to the communication piece, that's a big, that's a big piece. Because people really are trying to understand that. The TIF thing is complicated anyway, but, you know, when you call it urban renewal, then people are expecting urban renewal, not the build-out of, you know, former ag land. So anyway, so there's that. I just wanted to make that comment. When it comes to education, I think that that's important. Could you give me some examples of what the mayor was talking about regarding all the projects in Old Town to enhance safety and things like that? Do you have any examples off the top of your head?
Well, I can't speak to the mayor's examples, but I think he had some in mind that were specific.
So absolutely, we've got, you've got the renovation of the Yellowstone Hotel, the Yellowstone Restaurant there, you've got a new microbrewery that has been put together there that has been done with the PDA. There's some new public art that the PDA has supported in helping make that area look better. You've got, I think there was four or five roofs that were leaking and falling in that the PDA has went in and helped fix and protect those buildings. And so it was a number of things like that that the business owners had come to the PDA with the inability to do what they needed to do.
And were those loans or outright grants?
They were grants.
There's some loans.
There were a few loans, but quite a few grants to get that taken care of, which, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be wrong, I'm not even gonna throw a number out there because I'm gonna be wrong. I'll have Brent look that up and get those numbers exactly, but it was, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars that were invested there to protect and keep the downtown area viable.
Yeah, so a list and, you know, whether it was a grant or a loan and, you know, what the amortization period was, all that stuff would be fabulous.
Those, I think, have been in a few of the things in the past and some stuff, so.
Yeah.
It's pretty easy to pull those up.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to accessorize. If I remember correctly, from a couple of years ago, Chris, when we sat down to talk about, you know, politics and structure, one of the very things that was very salient in our conversation was economics and the responsibility of the taxpayers' money. And I think that your consistency in that theme is one that everyone in this room agrees to. And I think it's very, very candid that you say that, and it presents the opportunity for the PDA, the members of that board, to be able to have that kind of clarity with our constituency. So you've not varied from that, so I thank you for bringing that up, and I think it's one of the items that we can consider moving forward, especially as you suggested, sometimes the issue of who fills a certain slot has some challenges. I can sit here and tell you that when the mayor approached me about the opportunity, I also understood the commitment. And I don't say this in a very naive way, but there's a lot of folks that don't take that consideration seriously. And so it becomes that turnaround that you just spoke about, right? So hopefully, we have the type of membership now on the PDA board that will give us some consistency, but also give us the focus and direction that we need to follow for the entire citizen. So thank you for that.
And Mr. Mayor, since you and Heidi, I think Heidi, you consistently attend, but you're both a part of that, I mean, it appears to me that there ought to be some kind of way that's efficient and effective to create a different kind of communication, you know, to the council, because we have a de facto liaison.
Well, if you'll remember, we usually have had scheduled a liaison report, but due to COVID situations, we've had to cancel that a lot. We've also had some people who weren't prepared to come and report at the liaison report, so I'm happy to give any kind of updates, but that's usually when, or we've done it in the past, we kind of had those meetings.
And the council is copied on every set of minutes from all of the advisory boards, and so the council on a regular basis is getting those minutes and stuff, and then that report, when we're able to do that, that works.
Well, the minutes for PDA are actually on the PDAs.
Right.
Online. You mentioned a link to the PDA site, and the PDA does have a site for the minutes and all the agendas.
There's a site that's on the city website that links to the PDA website with all the minutes and agendas.
But, for example, if those are being, if those minutes are being disseminated, you know, why couldn't council be added to the auto list?
Distribution.
Because...
So the PDA is not disseminated like the other advisory committee?
It's different.
Because they're just on that.
Right, because they have a different kind of autonomy. Yeah. So I'm just looking for a way to be more, A, more educated, and B, clearer, because I think it would benefit everybody, including council, if the communication were more cogent.
Okay, so I did hear a question very upfront before we actually started the thing was, where and how is the reimbursements happening in Northgate? So I can explain that very simply.
I just want to know the order.
The order is the City of Pocatello, Pocatello Development Authority, Bannock County, the developers. That's the order.
And to date, how much has dropped? Do you ever pay?
There is no income coming in, no taxes have been generated there.
Right, I know that.
No money's coming back and forth, and so typically, it takes about three years after the, if you have somebody that's locating there immediately, about three years to get them all on the tax rolls and stuff. So we're probably a few years out from C and C.
Right, and that wasn't my question. My question is, how much, give or take again, how much city money has gone into Northgate to date and any ancillary things that had to happen in order to support Northgate? Where are we in terms of, you know, the bottom line for city money?
I don't have those numbers right in front of me. I can get that for you.
That'd be great.
But...
The reimbursable numbers for the City of Pocatello and the Northgate District would be $500,000 for the City of Pocatello. The Pocatello Development Authority has $2 million in it, and the Bannock County has one, I want to say they have 1.5 million, but it might be a million in it.
Okay, so $500,000, but I'd still love to see what actually comprises that.
Yep.
I think we're in a hole.
No, we're in, we're in at $500,000 in the TIF district, and we ran the sewer line down the thing, that was a project that we were doing, and I don't remember if we got that included in the TIF or not.
We were told that it would be, I think it was a $700,000 project.
Okay, so...
And it was one that was planned into the TIF district development.
So with that, then we would have 1.2 million into it. I don't remember if that one was in or not, but Roger probably remembers better.
So, anyway, I just would, again, for example...
A report would be something.
It's not strictly for that project.
That was why that's questionable, was because it was to benefit other areas as well, that $700,000, but I know there is a discussion Roger probably remembers better than I do.
And then one more, this is, you know, to borrow Claudia's phrase, a Varney question. What is the relationship between monetarily, between the interchange and the TIF district?
You're gonna have to explain your question.
I mean, is, was the interchange, the money that the city contributed toward the interchange part of the whole TIF process?
Yes.
And how much money did the city contribute toward the interchange?
$500,000.
Okay.
100% of that was at the interchange.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Sorry for the confusion, David, and for the small delay. Thank you for your time. I owe you lunch for that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, council, we're gonna go ahead and take a little break right now, and then we will be back in just a few minutes. Okay, looks like we're ready. Thank you very much for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and get started with Agenda Item Number Five, Police Union Quarterly Update. Members of the Pocatello Police Union will give the council an update of activities for the past quarter.
Good morning, council members and mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here, and thank you for your time and your support. Turn that off. So last year's been, no doubt, has been a trying time for our officers in our community as well as nationwide. We've still managed to try to stay engaged with the efforts in the community to help CASA. That stuff's coming up with all our fundraisers we normally do. COVID's kind of put a damper on things, so I'm hoping that that will get kicked off as we missed it last year, had to be counseled. But we've been able to still donate to the food bank, and we're trying to do that on a regular basis, at least twice a year, so once in the spring, once in the fall, in winter time. And the senior center we've started this last year donating to them, try to do that on a more regular basis to help them out as well. So I didn't know how many meals they actually provide to the community. They do a great service to the community, and anything we can do to help them is good.
Val, real quick, real quick, Val, donation to the food bank, you had the, Give the Cops a Bird. You were able to get, I think, 1,001 turkeys?
Yeah.
And how much, many dollars?
With all the matches, I think it'd come up over 10,000.
Yeah, I seem to recall somewhere close to 13.
$13,000, and I believe there was also another match that, that was at another $10,000. So really, because of the police union, you were able to help the food bank at $23,000 plus 1,000 turkeys.
Yeah.
That's, that's incredible. Thank you.
We'll donate again to them this spring.
Well, and I think it's real important to understand that when you can give a dollar to the food bank, it's multiplied seven to 10 times by what they're able to do with that money.
They do a great service, you look at that, so. We try to keep, we make sure we note on the donations that stays in southeastern Idaho to help our people around here.
The food bank donates, the food bank supports the Valley Mission, and the Valley Mission now is expanding. They're gonna be providing transitional assistance to people, you know, they're, they serve their time, they get out of, they get out of incarceration, and then they help them get back into society in a positive constructive way, so the food bank supports them, and I think that that's what we need to do.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. I don't have a lot here, so I'll try to throw us things out.
Well, we're just trying to help you.
Well, I think it's important for the community to see what the police union actually is doing, the, the union. This isn't the police department, this is the union and the members of the union and the time that is spent, you know, and the, the money that is spent, and that's collected by you.
Yeah.
And that, that's important. Something that I think's also important, and I don't know, you might mention it, I should just be quiet, but all the times you go on a call and you have somebody that is in need of something, the union steps up to help. Put them in a hotel room that night if needed, the union steps up to...
We, we try to. Typically, it's just the officers are doing it and dispatchers on their own, and we try to reimburse them, but they usually don't take it. So it's out of their own pocket that they're doing that individually.
Okay, well, that's, it's still, I think, important to make, mention of.
We appreciate it. So, back to where I was at, you, you're all well, well aware, escalation of violence against police officers nationwide, and it's come home to our own communities now, as you've seen a lot of more violence against us taking place. Trend has no doubt had an adverse effect on recruiting and maintaining a professional police department in our state and city. Different agencies across the state are actively trying to recruit our people more and more. State police has decided to not have their stress academy, and that's what kept a lot of people away from going over there, is they have that stress academy that they put people through. And with that put aside, it's no doubt gonna start attracting more people for more pay and a little bit different lifestyle, I guess. We currently have five officers in the academy, three of them entering the field training program, or three more entering here in about three weeks. So we're gonna have a total of eight officers in field training program at one time. That's not been seen since I've been here 23 years. So being a field training officer as well, or sergeant, in charge of scheduling all that stuff, it's kind of a nightmare for me, trying to get it figured out and get a plan, get these people trained and out on the street. But as we've talked about before, it'll take about three to five years to get these guys up to speed where they're really comfortable on their own and making good decisions. We're hoping to have these guys, new officers, out by summertime. We're very fortunate to have the support of the community, as many have shown the support in these changing times, to continue to help us buy in our food at restaurants and different things, thanking us when we get out of our cars, we get people walking up to us on traffic stops, accidents, and thanking us for what we do. And we'll turn that back and say thank you to the community for supporting us, it's really appreciated by our people, means a lot to them. Our department still has a well-trained and dedicated group of police officers. With changing times and attitude toward police, we fear this could be in jeopardy, and it's been a struggle to maintain that. We want to do everything we can to minimize the effects of it. It's imperative that we maintain a professionally staffed police department, both for the community we serve and for the officers that are serving the community. Again, we thank you for your support and time that you've given us here today to talk with you and meet with you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Chris?
I'm wondering, I mean, there's got, hopefully, there's beginning to be some national research on what communities can do, not, not just the police department, but what communities can do to really support and protect officers on the street. I mean, this is an ancient example, but after all the unrest around the Vietnam War in Madison, I mean, downtown Madison was literally a war zone. I mean, there were automatic weapons on the roofs of buildings and so forth and so on between the Capitol and the university. And after that dissipated somewhat, the city made a concerted effort, they did a national search, now Madison's a different city than Pocatello, I understand that, but they brought in a chief who was, had a long track record of heavy-duty community policing. And it, and there was a citywide campaign to talk about, you know, an education campaign, and, I mean, we started seeing, you know, young officers on bikes just stopping and chatting. And, and it, it changed, it changed the environment in which the community interacted with police officers, but it also changed the environment beneficially for the police officers, because they were at least emotionally safer and perhaps also physically safer. So I'm wondering how, whether there's a way to pursue conversations, you know, with the union about, I mean, could we do some kind of community-wide, you know, with the chamber, with, you know, other organizations, where we're really helping to protect and support you, and I, you know, more than we are now?
I think that gap is, that, that gap is bridged pretty well with our community.
Right.
It, it starts kind of from the inside out. Our leadership encourages us, encourages us to be a part of the community.
Right.
You know, they allow, I mean, myself, for example, I go to the local high school, I, I'm able to use vacation time, I've had senior officers work for me so that I can make games and stuff like that, and, and me, me personally doing that, you know, I've, I've done it for, I don't know, seven years now. Not, not, some of my kids are getting married and having kids, you know?
Yeah.
And they're still my kids, and, and I see them, and, and it's definitely, and that's just me as one person. As far as, you know, some of our assignments, we are, we have rekindled relationships as far as with Pocatello Works and the districts, and have an open line communication, and we are, we are encouraged to walk the streets and walk the schools. They don't have to be SROs to go on the schools.
Right.
We're encouraged to be around, and I think, as Sergeant Wasworth explained earlier, I think that's really where the meat and potatoes of us being positive and staying positive when we deal with crap.
Right.
When we deal with, when we deal with crap, it, it comes, comes back twofold.
Right.
When you walk to the schools and get to play tag with some kids, and they, they recognize you by name. And so we, we do, we'll work on that, that platform.
And...
And we hope to maintain it and make it stronger.
Yeah, don't misunderstand me. I, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I know you do that. I, I mean, I was in the schools. My question is, is there something else as a community that, for example, you know, that the, the city could help partner with? So something that the community could do to support you? It's not a suggestion that you're not already doing things, but, you know, is, is there something perhaps?
I think they support us pretty well. I mean, I, I mean, what I was leaning towards is the idea of, I, I think that we are bridging any kind of gaps, and, and we're willing to accept the support. I think, I, I, I work here because of the people, and if, as soon as I wasn't feeling appreciated that way, then I, I wouldn't be here, you know? But I, I think that there's, I think people are doing the best they can to help us, and we're doing the best we can to, to, to give back to them, too.
Okay.
We'd be open for whatever suggestions that might come up with the union to better relationships.
I mean, I'm just thinking of, you know, what if we did a, you know, a celebrate the, the police, you know, week, and, and, you know, chamber was involved, you know, I mean, I mean, you know, sometimes very goofy, you know, not hard to, to do things.
Put it down in the dunking booth and put the chief in it. I think a lot of it, too, is like, instead of celebrating us, we just really, we just want to be part of, celebrate all of us, you know, and us being one. I think that's the biggest thing, is that the united front of goodness trying to make this place safe. I think that's the most important thing.
Sure.
The chamber does a law enforcement appreciation banquet every year, has for several years.
Right.
It's already planned to get it this year.
That date is set, by the way, I believe, June 17?
Yeah. I just want you guys to be, and ladies, to be safe on the streets, and, you know, because I think that's a lot of, I mean, frankly, being safe in a school drives a lot of people, a lot of teachers out. And I, I, and so money is one thing, but I think there's also, you know, I mean, it takes a certain kind of spouse to want.
I can tell you that there's people right now contemplating whether or not this is the right job for them.
Yeah.
Because of this kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So, I anticipate losing some people this year because of...
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, I'm just grasping for ways that we might deal with, help with that emotional strain, to help your recruiting efforts and to keep those of you who are currently on the streets as safe as possible.
Roger?
We used to have a police advisory board, and I was on that, and it, it was a both-and group where police could bring some of their concerns to us, community could bring concerns to the police. That was retired seven or eight years ago, I think. But I really do, I, I have a belief in that, because I think that there's a difference in non-structured, good feelings type stuff, and structured support. And I think that advisory board was a structured support system. The SRO program came out of that. I don't know if the police academy came out of that or not, may have.
Citizens Academy?
Yes, Citizens Academy. You know, there were just ways of interchange with the public. It also gives a buffer when bad things happen, and there's a, a support group there that can look at things that doesn't make it all in the, in the department realm or the police realm with some other department. It, it helps to have a citizens group that is informed and can carry a message. So I think that might be something we should be looking at, because it could, it can go as far as what Chris is saying, but it can also come back and say, there are grants available that this group particularly qualifies for as a advisory group. We, we got several large-scale grants when I used to be engaged with them. So I, I just think maybe we need to understand you're working outside the box, and maybe we need to look outside the box some more in terms of the structure we put in place behind you guys, so that the community, and behind the community, you know, it's, it's a go-to place for both groups.
It's a good idea.
Linda?
I, I do have a question. First, I wanted to just thank you all for all that you do for the community and taking care of, I mean, supporting your members. And my question is, it was mentioned about the, you know, the emotional stress that you deal with and ways to handle that, or to address that, and I was wondering about the EAP program, and I know, you know, I mean, we started a while ago, and you have said before that that's been working well for you, but we have switched providers, and I was just curious if you had any comments about how it's going with the new provider? Is it still working?
It was a great switch.
Great switch? Is that what you said?
It was a very positive switch.
Good.
It's been a lot easier for members to access, easier for us to, to get the help that we need. The department itself, we've structured a lot more things to try to debrief and, and talk out stuff that we've experienced and done. That portion of it just internally is a kind of a work in progress, you know, maybe not to do so many, or, or how to, how to actually better protect our members that are involved in stuff emotionally, but, but for the most part, I think the, the strongest suit of it is that it's not a faux pas thing to say that you're struggling with something.
To get rid of that stigma.
That stigma, that stigma, I think, has definitely, over the past few years, has definitely improved. And an education-based portion to allow members to know that it's not just our, our job, you know, it's the stuff that's going on at home, you know, even, or with our families, because that's stressful, and, and our job's stressful enough, we don't need to add to it, and we need to have a clear head when we're making decisions, and, you know, a lot of our job is about the priority, protecting life, and, and also it's, you know, sometimes, unfortunately, we have to take people's freedom, you know? And so for us to make sure that we're making the right decisions, if we have a clear head, and I think that's been passed throughout, through the union, especially to utilize the AP and to utilize that stuff, we've, we've stuck on it with the, through the contract. I think that those things are definitely something that has been appreciated and I think has been utilized.
That's great to hear. Thanks. Do spouses have access at all?
We do, they can, yes.
They can? Oh, that's great.
Families as well.
Yeah. Shout out to Heather in HR for, for spearheading that, that shift. She deserves...
She did a lot of work on it.
A lot of credit for finding. And, and when, when you get your new, your new dog, that we meet him before, before just being petted and loved on record string?
Yeah, yeah, of course, I mean, that would be awesome.
Okay, any other questions, council? Thank you very much. Thanks for everything that you're doing for us and our, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thanks.
You, too. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, Regional Economic Development of Eastern Idaho, Ready Updates. Theresa McKnight, Chief Executive Officer of Ready, will be present to give the council an update of Ready's activities and achievements.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I came prepared this time in case we had a technology glitch.
I thought of you.
Well, I appreciate this opportunity again, and it just seems like the quarters go by way too fast. It just seems like I was just here presenting to you, but I'm excited to share with you, because we've closed out the year 2020, and even under a horrific time that we've gone through with the pandemic, it's amazing what our region has accomplished, and so I'm excited to share that information with you today. So as we know, 2020, when, when March hit, I don't think... So as we know, 2020, when March hit, I don't think any of us were prepared for what was to come. But we have seen so many positive things happen, especially with leadership and our businesses quickly pivoting and adapting to the environment and how quickly they did that. So 2020 is going down in history as the year of pivoting and adapting to our environment and how quick as human beings that we can do that. So I wanted to just give you in this presentation, an economic briefing of where we closed the year out. And right now, the year 2020 closeout for unemployment came in at 3.8% for Southeastern Idaho and 3.3% for Eastern Idaho. This is phenomenal because if you look at between March and April of 2020, our unemployment jumped from 2.2% to 8.6%. So to come back to a 3.8% is pretty phenomenal in the months that we have. And then under Eastern Idaho, you know, they jumped from 2.1% to 7.8%. And so also I've outlined the list of counties that are in each of those areas of the regions and you can see those there. Also, I wanted to highlight what's been happening as far as moving in and moving out. According to the 2020 National Migration Study, Idaho is the number one state for inbound moves in 2020. Idaho received far more residents than it lost in 2020. So total inbound was 70.1%, total outbound was 29.9%. Retirement was one of the most common reasons for coming into Idaho. But as you can see here, I've broken it out by sections, retirement versus health versus family versus lifestyle versus job. Now, I do want to point out, the job to me is very concerning because we've got people coming inbound for job opportunities, but we've got almost twice the amount going out. And this is one of the areas that Ready is really focusing on this year, is doing a better education of not only those that are in that area between 18 and 35 to 45 that are in the workforce, but our higher education kids are coming in and receiving their education and leaving. And this is costly to us because other states are reaping the benefits of our investment into these higher education kids. So what we're trying to do is we're working with an economic group right now that we are putting together an economic calculator so that these kids can truly see that when they get a job offer in California for a six-figure, the cost of living is sometimes going to put them upside down versus if they were to remain here at maybe a five-figure, a high five-figure salary, that the net income that they would be bringing home would be a lot more substantial than it would be in California. So we feel like that economic calculator is a good visible piece for them to be able to look at reality because, you know, they're young. They've spent all this time getting educated. They want to get out into the workforce and they latch on to that dollar figure instead of the true reality of cost of living. So that's an area that we're focused on. In addition to that, when we look at, based on the income results, as you can see, the migration survey concluded that the cost of living in Idaho was an important factor for inbound moves. That the 65 or older group was the largest inbound move. This matches the retirement being the number one reason to move to Idaho. But as you can see, our age ranges here, and most concerning to us is again, that outbound that in some instances, 35 to 44 is three times what it is the inbound. So those are figures that are important to us. Those are figures that we really watch and monitor. And we start to work with different organizations to say, how can we stop, you know, this bleed of our people leaving, our residents leaving for other opportunities? So again, I just wanted to let you know where those numbers were coming in.
Teresa?
Yes?
Could, could one of the factors in, be interpreted to what you've been saying? It seems like a migration for jobs and once the jobs are over, there's a migration here. It looks to me like people are saying, I have to go somewhere else to earn a better living.
Correct.
And now that I've earned a better living, it's more economical for me to be back in Idaho.
Yeah, there's multiple reasons.
Because we traffic a lot of people through.
Yeah. Multiple reasons for them to come back. You know, you have those that graduate, want to spread their wings, get out of Idaho. They were born and raised here and they just want to get out into what they call the real world. They get out to the real world, that's not really what they thought it would be. They meet significant others, they want to come back and raise their family and environment that they were raised in. So we see, you know, kind of that outbound, but then we also see them returning. We'd like to see a larger percentage returning than what we're seeing. But again, those are areas that we have as a data point that we can work on, so.
And then when it comes to the lifestyle part of that, how does that break down? Because lifestyle can be lots of different things. And I would assume that it's the outdoor activity in the four seasons at Idaho that's.
It is. And you know, what's interesting is we've had several individuals come in from the East Coast and that's a transition because you think of all of the different activities that they have on the East Coast that aren't what we have here, but we have different other types of things they don't have in the city, you know, jumping on your mountain bike and heading up into the mountains and so on. And so there's kind of a give and take. But those that we've talked with that came in from the East Coast said, you know what? I love it here because the air is fresh, the beautiful mountains, the outdoor recreational dream for me. I've become more outdoors person than I ever thought I would be. In addition to that, they talk about the commute time. Instead of being stuck in traffic for several hours, that a lot of them at six minutes from their home, once they back out of the garage and head to their, their work base, it's a six-minute drive. And they just said, it's just phenomenal here. And so we're telling them, that's great. Spread that news to your colleagues so that they understand what you're enjoying and to come enjoy it as well.
Years ago, there was a, you know how they profile all the things that are offered in communities? And we were listed pretty low in terms of culture because we didn't have enough art, music, and stuff like that.
Right.
So I wrote them in, wrote into them and I said, so let me understand this. It's better to go see a picture of something than it is to go see the real thing. You know, and because they were, a lot of the exhibits were exhibits of nature and we've got nature right out our back door.
You're absolutely right. And I think that our, our whole nation is changing, you know? The health and lifestyle is changing for people to get out, to walk, to hike, to do these things. And, you know, we have an amazing place here, especially in Pocatello, with so many trails and different places that you can go for any type of recreation or exercising. So, I mean, it's amazing. We all drive past Portnitz and we see how many people are out walking the trails constantly. It's just a mass of people down in that area. So.
Can you, can you just explain this slide?
Yes, so this is basically a cost of living slide. And what we do is we do an analysis every year to figure out where do areas rank? You know, we all hear about Boise and the growth in Boise, but when you start to look at it, the calculations for cost of living are based on energy, you know, your utilities, food, healthcare, housing, transportation. And Boise and Meridian right now are the most costly places to live in Idaho. And when you look at the bottom, being on the bottom is the best place you want to be because it shows and highlights the Pocatello as far as cost of living is the best place in Idaho to be.
So that's 87.76% of the national average.
Correct, correct.
I think they go on to a scale of 100 and then there are other cities and places that go above 100. So 100 is not exactly.
But again, this is a great way to promote Pocatello is to show, look at our cost of living compared to other cities, not only in our region, but also outside our region.
Heidi?
Teresa, have you looked at or do you remember from when you were in Utah, where does, you know, kind of the Salt Lake, Wasatch front rank?
I have not seen updated numbers on that, but I can certainly get those just to see where we rank.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Because you bring up a good point, Heidi. We are very, when it comes to site selectors and interested companies and we get our RFIs, then Utah is on the RFI list as well. So we're competing against Utah. And one of the areas that we're really trying to work hard on is just the tax incentives that are given in Utah. And it's interesting because there's a bill right now in Utah's state legislative process that basically legislators are saying that we are the ramification of our good performance and that we have now hurt ourselves because we've outpriced Utah to come here because housing has increased, because all of these people that came in from different areas like California said, wow, it's so cheap to buy a house here. I can pay cash for it. So that volume has increased costs across Utah in a lot of areas. And now they're saying, no more, we can't give any more incentives. So I'm following that bill just to see because again, there are competition of us to get companies here. And I want to see what's going to happen with some of those tax incentives. And of course, working for the state of Utah, I'm very interested to see because that was a big pool for getting a lot of the companies in that they did. So now let's look at where we are right now as far as what's happened in our region and what's happened with Ready in the year 2020. Our regional unemployment, so this is, this is weighted as 4.1. This is for the Southeast, East Idaho. This is preliminary. There's still a few data points that are coming in, but we're pretty secure that it's going to be 4.1% is where the year is going to end. Our regional population, this is phenomenal because when I came onboard July 1, 2019, we were promoting that we were a community of 367,000 region and we are at now 403. This is where the year closed out, almost 404,000, which is pretty phenomenal. As you know, we've rolled out new programs in 2020. I've talked about all of these programs extensively as I've made my presentations. But I think when we looked at our data over the last year, it was mind-boggling that, you know, a staff of two, a CEO and an executive assistant, we assisted 81 businesses last year. Now, a lot of it was due to COVID, but a lot of it was not due to COVID. It's the way regional economic development organizations are supposed to work, is to focus on our businesses in our region. So that was pretty phenomenal. We had 24 prospects, interested companies that we received RFIs and interest from that either came through the Idaho Commerce or came directly to Ready. This is compared to nine that we had in 2019, three in the first half of 2019. Again, I came onboard July 1 of 2019. So during my time, my first six months on the job, we had six in the second half of 2019. From those prospects this year, we did have several wins, which we were excited about. And I think that the other pieces working together, we had 33 new partnerships that were developed across our region, both in Southeast and East Idaho through Ready. The other thing too is on our US, on the United States pandemic drive, the historic tax revenue, I thought it was important for you to also receive this data. 19 states were forced to pull back on spending. 15 tapped into their rainy day funds to balance their fiscal 2020 budgets. 43 states recorded tax revenue drops for fiscal year. But just three states, and I wanted to highlight West Virginia because they were, West Virginia was one of those states recorded to have the greatest percentage decline in at least 25 years. They fell 8%. So seven states collected more tax revenue and of the seven, Idaho was one of them. That was the only state above 5%. And I included this map because this is so impressive and I have been sending this out to site selectors. We are the only state in blue that came above 5%. The other states in light blue were 0 to 5%. Those in light orange were, that dropped below, are in pretty bad shape and those in dark orange are in not good shape at all. But that is a pretty strong picture when you look at that. That blue, that dark blue stands out. And that is because of city leadership, county leadership and state leadership. That's what it's all about. So I want to commend you as leaders.
Every internet sales.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true, that's true. I also thought it was interesting, I reached out to my colleague who runs a site selection group where they send site selectors out to different areas. They made five predictions for 2021. I want to share those with you. The first one is renewed activity in site selection. So April 2020, it went up, it was about 47% is what companies or projects were looking for locations. So from April to June, it jumped up to 65% and then December, it jumped up to 80%. And they see a significant upswing in consultants predicting companies will move forward with projects in 2021. So that's good news for us. The second prediction, so there's five predictions they've made, is the hybrid is the new normal. In other words, it used to be that site visits were onsite, right? And that's the only way that they would do it. It's not anymore. It's virtual community visits, it's desktop analysis. And I've got to tell you, our site selectors are, to me, it's mind-boggling the amount of data they're pulling down. And when they reach out to me, the information they're sharing about our region, that a lot of, even some of our local economists didn't even have access. So I'm trying to figure out what databases they're pulling their data from. But they're selling our communities really better than we are because of the data that they're accessing. It's amazing. And then also technology use, drones. So because they cannot make actual site visits, they're using drones to look at the area, which if you think about it from a perspective, if I was a site selector coming in, I'm at the ground level and I'm looking across and I'm seeing what buildings, I really don't have the visual that a drone is actually providing, which gives you a wider scope of sites. And so I'm beginning to wonder if Ready should invest in a drone just so that we can help with some of these virtual site visits. So it's pretty amazing. 95% of the consultants reported transition to all virtual or hybrid selection processes going to happen. The third one is cautious optimism of the federal direct investment. 83% of the consultants predict that the FDI to the US will grow or stabilize. So that's good news. The fourth one is workforce challenges. Skilled labor shortages is what they're seeing for 2021. New talent pools via remote work, which we're seeing. And then temporary surplus of lower skilled labor. And then the fifth one is the supply chain shakeup will continue. We already knew that, we're seeing that. And so the supply chain is really getting creative and I am seeing that firsthand because of the supply chain that's coming in in respect to the nuclear projects that are coming down the pipeline. So we've had a lot of problems, but we quickly responded with a lot of solutions. It's pretty amazing to see what's happened. And as we all know, with problems, there's always that force the hand where you have to quickly provide a solution. So to me, sometimes problems are good things to have because we respond quicker. Maybe it was something we would have responded to in two years where we had to quickly respond overnight because of the pandemic. So we're looking at 2021 as the year transformational opportunities. We're going to continue to stay the course and focus on all these areas that I've talked about in previous presentations because we have worked hard and we are making a difference. And that's what it's all about.
I'm curious, if Pocatello loses metropolitan status, how is that, how is that going to affect economic development? And I know you're responsible for the whole region, but I want to talk specifically about here. How is that going to affect economic development here in Pocatello?
I've got a couple of slides towards the end because I want to hit that because that's a big elephant in every room that I've been going to over this last week. So.
Sorry about that, go ahead.
No, you're okay. But I think the information on the slide would be good in answer to your question. But we continue to work hard with our stakeholders. We want to expand regional assets for Southeast and East Idaho, connecting the public-public and the public-private partnerships. We already saw the partnerships that have already been formed through Ready. It's working. We want to continue to have more of those happen. Again, removing the silos, collaboration, working together is critical to the strength of a region. We've made major efforts to strengthen workforce pipeline. We've got some new programs that will help enhance entrepreneurial and research activities. But it's all about open communication. And I talked about, you know, the Economic Development Roundtable Group that we put together last year. That is so important because all of the economic development directors from the cities and the counties, as well as your organizations like Vannick Development, we meet on a monthly basis and we go around the table and everybody gives an update of the activities that are occurring in their area over the last month. And then of course, if they want to report, here's some things we're looking forward to over the next couple of weeks, then they provide that input. It makes everybody aware of what's going on in each one of the communities, which is critical. Again, removing those silos, keeping that communication open, collaborating with each other, supporting each other has just been an important piece in advancing our economic development efforts. each other, has just been an important piece in advancing our economic development efforts. And also, we're going to continue to provide that comprehensive, so some of these data points that I talked about, it's data-driven, all of our decisions are data-driven, it's also based on best practices. But also, you can only do economic development to a certain level where you've got to get creative and think outside the box, and push some boundaries. And that's what we've done over the last 12 months. Our priorities for 2021 are, again, focused especially on our seven sectors. We really want to grow and strengthen our seven sectors. Some of them will do it naturally, like the energy sector, because of what's happening with the nuclear projects. But we've got a lot of research happening in this area that's not getting out into the hands of the private sector. So there is increase of federal research through the Idaho National Lab, there's an increase of research that's happening at our higher education institutions. That research has got to get out and be put to use. And so there's some creative programs that we're looking at right now, that we want to instigate. They worked really well in other states that I've been at. There's no reason why they can't work well here, so we're really going to push that. And then of course, we've got to prep for growth now. And I know we talked about this in length last time in my presentation, but I'm telling you, I'm not warning you, I'm just really highly, as hard as I possibly can emphasizing, we've got to prep for growth now, because it's already starting, we're already feeling it, we're already seeing it up in the Idaho Falls area because of, the naval reactor facilities has already started, there are 150 construction workers onsite, they're ramping up with another 250 coming on board over the next 10 to 12 months. They'll cap at about 400, they could possibly go to 500. But that's just one project that's already ramping up. The amount of concrete, the amount of steel that's coming in is phenomenal. But that will be multiplied again by, it's one of six projects approved right now, if the other three are approved, again, it complicates things even more. But workforce, housing, infrastructure, Interstate 15, also Highway 20, and broadband, and transportation, which includes our airport, and then of course, our road systems are going to be highly impacted.
I just had a thought. Not only are we on a north, an east, north-south, east-west freeway system, I believe we're kind of unique with railroad. I'm not sure if the railroad still goes up into Montana, but I believe it does. I know it doesn't go to Yellowstone, we can use too. But I would think the railroad system, particularly north-south, would be something that could be beneficial.
Yeah, it'll be interesting what happens with the railroad system, with technology changing and with the delivery systems changing. It'll just be interesting to see what's going to happen.
They advertise that it's the cheapest.
Yeah. I tried to pull down some reports on that, just to see if there's been an analysis of projections into the future, and what that's going to look like. But I think that, you know, when we look at Frigitech and the discussion for the intermodal facility, you know, there's a just cause, because it gets agriculture goods and other goods out of our area and into the hands, where they can now be put on a ship and shipped out to the areas that are needed. So, you know, I agree, I can see the justification, but, you know, again, it's all based on national perspectives, so. Our new programs and initiatives have rolled out the Regional Idaho Talent Pipeline Management, the TPM, that's underway. It's a playbook for how employers can partner with education and training providers. It is really an employer-led education program, so we're excited about that. We, Ready is leading it from the region perspective, but it is a statewide program that is being rolled out by the Idaho Workforce Development Council. There were 34 people across the state trained. I was one of those 34 people for the region that were trained on this program. It's pretty extensive, six months of training for that program. So again, it's very, it takes a very deep dive. We've also launched trailing spouse program, we're finding out from a lot of professionals that are coming into Southeast and East Idaho, they're bringing spouses and partners that also need jobs, that are also professionals. And so because of our network, and our investors, and other recruitment tools that we have, we can actually send those resumes out and do a quicker response time to seek opportunities for those individuals rather than for them banging the doors down of our employers, then we can disseminate the information quickly. Also, we're expanding our partnerships, so one of the new programs we've expanded, we talk about partnerships, is one that we're doing with United Way, we're putting together a pilot workforce program, and that is again underway. So more information will be coming on that. We're also taking a deep dive and inventory and pulling together a report from ISU, CEI, U of I, BYU, so our four education institutions here in our region, and aligning what courses and other programs in support of our sectors. What are we doing? Where's our gaps? What do we need to change? And so that's going to be exciting to see how that data comes together. Also, we formed an advanced manufacturing alliance, and the purpose of doing this was twofold. Number one, with the energy sector that's coming down the pipeline and the construction that will be required for these projects, we see a lot of movement that's probably going to happen. So we're assuming that, you know, peaking at 2025 with 5,000 construction workers, we're estimating 60% of those will be coming from out of state, which is 3,000, right? So then you say 3,000 and 5,000, that's 2,000 employees. Where are they going to come from? Internally, right? So where are they going to come from? Current workforce, right? So what we're trying to do is working together on a program in which we can take a deep dive of wages, salaries, benefits, education programs, so that we can help our advanced manufacturing group to retain their employees. And if there is movement, that it's not, doesn't create a substantial impact on our local employers. And then of course, we're forming Nuclear Cyber Security Alliance, that is underway. There's a lot of movement and activity that's happening, of course, from INL clear down to the FBI. And so there's some amazing programs that will be coming out of this, which I'll be able to provide more information as we advance that forward. We've rolled out the Idaho SBIRSTTR Virtual Innovation Center. I've talked about the SBIRSTTR program. The hub will be ran by Ready, so it will be centrally located with Ready, PTAC, and SPDC. And then we've brought on statewide partners, and they're the spokes, so you think of the hub and spoke model, they're the spokes to the hub, in which we're going to increase the amount of grants that we receive. As you know, and I've reported in the past, that we are four states in the Rocky State, Utah, Idaho, Montana, Wyoming. Utah has 80 funded grants, SBIRSTTR grants, a year. Montana, this was last year, Montana had 40, Wyoming had 10, we have three. $3.7 billion goes through this program, 17 different programs, DOD, DOE, NIH, NSF, all the federal programs have a lot of money sitting out there to help support commercialization of new technologies. And so we already spun out this group, and it's U of I, ISU, so these are the tech transfer offices, Boise State University, Idaho Commerce, Terrell Head in Boise, I know I'm forgetting, oh, INL Tech Deployment Office. These are all the partners that have come on board. So Ready wrote a white paper, we sent the white paper out, said here's our concept of trying to grow and increase our efforts in this area, and everybody just latched on and says, let's get this thing going. And so Ready led the direction of pulling it together, reaching out to all the partners, bringing them on board. And we're in the process, the MOU is near completion. We've got a couple of partners that just have to fill in their area of the MOU. So again, it's rolling out roles, responsibilities, and obligations of everyone to get this rolling out.
And then what I think I'm understanding is that once that partnership is kind of up and running, that one of the potential outcomes is an increase in...
In grants.
Grants.
Yep. Yep. And we just, just a week and a half ago, we had our first workshop, 101 workshop, which was really to educate people across the state of what SBIRSTTR, and I can get you that schedule, it will also be posted on our website once we get our page launched for this program. But just to give you the indication, our very first one, with not a lot of marketing efforts, because we pulled it together so quickly to get the ball rolling, we had 47 attendees across the state. This was just the first one, first of many that will be presented. So we were excited about that. And then we do have several other programs underway, including a site selection assessment of our region, that I'm working with several colleagues on. So again, this is just the SBIR program. There is a road tour that happens every year normally, that all of the federal managers in Washington, DC get on a bus, they travel across the United States, they stop in different areas in Idaho, it's Idaho Falls. It was COVID, so we couldn't do that, so we held it virtually. And I think that's why it was the highest-attended so-called virtual road tours, because Lewiston, Coeur d'Alene, some areas that are quite far from Idaho Falls, could just connect through their computer. And so we see a real mass uptick in this program, and so it's exciting to see it coming together so quickly, far quicker than we imagined it would happen.
Could you go back a slide and just help me understand what a site selection assessment of our region means?
Yeah. So what it is, is that we want to know what we're doing really good at, and what we're not doing so good at. So we bring in site selectors that actually are national site selectors, that look for sites in which companies have hired them to, for relocation. They come in and they take a deep dive. So what they do is they do preliminary work prior to coming in to our region, and then once they come into the region, there's different interviews that are taking place, where they collect additional data. And then they'll provide a report to us, it gives us an assessment.
And will that...
Gives us a grade, so to speak.
Sure, sure. And do, does that assessment process dig down to the municipal level?
Yes.
So that, in other words, Pocatello gets grade two. And the grade isn't important, what's important is, you know, what are you at mastery level on, and where do you need...
Yes, because Pocatello and Idaho Falls right now are your two largest communities in our region.
Right.
And so that's the top of their list, and then they would start digging down there from, you know, the highest populated to the lowest.
That, to me, that's really good news, because I see that data being data that PDA, you know, Pocatello City Council, Bannock Development, Chamber of Commerce, you know, Portnoy Valley Partnership, I mean, that data could bring a lot of people...
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right.
Together.
And I also think that, you know, they have the ability to tell you, here are sectors that we found from the outside looking in, that your city needs to focus on.
Yeah.
And do a better cluster development of those sectors.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
You bet, absolutely. We talked about that. So preparing for growth now, information continues to be disseminated across the United States in regards to the activities that's happening in our region, not only current, but also the near future, with what's happening with the energy sector, the supply chain companies that are expressing interest to come into our region, and the new and improved fuels, cybersecurity technologies, as well as food nutrition. We're really getting out there nationwide as an epicenter for food nutrition, which is amazing, because Twin Falls is trying to become a center of excellence for food. But we've got a lot of it here as a food and nutrition center. There are strong activities in several sectors that have sparked great interest, energy, cybersecurity, our agriculture, and our advanced manufacturing. So it poses the question, and this was brought up last time I presented, are the cities and counties in our region prepared for what's to come? And again, I alluded to it just a few minutes ago, I cannot express to you getting ready for what's to come.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Could you clarify, what does becoming a center of excellence for food mean?
So center of excellence, which basically means you've got a lot of businesses within that area that is sending out, distributing, it has a far outreach, not only within, you know, the nation, but also from an international perspective. So you become kind of a center pod for agriculture or...
And is that, is that some kind of official designation?
We can go after a national designation to say that we are a site, we are a center for excellence in cybersecurity. That's one thing that we are going after, is not only a center of excellence for energy, but a center of excellence for cybersecurity.
Well, and I'm just thinking about as Frigitech gets up and running, because I think, Rick, I think you mentioned that they're actually looking at doing more than they initially, be larger than they initially anticipated. I don't know, I don't, I think, for some reason, I think that I got that notion from you. But anyway, so it just makes me wonder, you know, whether, whether, again, saying, okay, here's what we would need to get there, you know, here's what Pocatello already has, here's what we would need, and would that help us focus, you know, some of our, some of our economic development searches, so to speak?
Oh, absolutely.
Knowing that if we can get, you know, five more whatevers, that that gets us this designation, which then hopefully would...
It raises you up in that search.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, you're absolutely right. So let's go to this slide, how long has it been since an inventory of the city system was completed? So we talked briefly about this last time, but I want to again emphasize this again. Ready's encouraging and suggesting that every regional municipality take a deep dive of their policies and procedures. And that includes fee structures, permitting, processes, and timelines for development, cutting any red tape. Is your system a bottleneck, or is your system streamlined and efficient? Are there fees that can be reduced, and are there timelines that can be reduced? We want you to put yourself in the driver's seat of the businesses, or the site selectors that are seeking locations and looking to expand or develop in your city or your county. And then also, is your city or county in a strong position to be open for business and to do business with?
Yeah, last time, you know, I know we talked about this, but I'm just curious if you have like a very specific thing in mind relative to our city. Like I know, in the past, we've heard that the county had had some struggles with permits or things, but I know they've really been trying to make an effort to push those through more rapidly. And I know we constantly have staff that's looking at fees and looking at, you know, how we can do this. So I'm just curious if there's, like, is there something, come right out and say it, if there is something specifically that you've identified that we need to address, or you're just kind of recommending this broadly to everyone?
I'm recommending it for all municipalities, cities and counties in our region.
Okay, so you don't have an idea of anything specific?
I think that you're in a prime position, because you've actually brought on a professional who used to work for a different municipality.
Yeah.
That can give you a lot of comparisons. And so I think that that would be a good place to start.
Okay.
I think somewhere, I think I heard that Rebecca over in Idaho Falls had pulled together departments that would be involved in, you know, in a business relocating, and basically put together a flow chart.
So that's right here.
Okay.
You asked...
Okay.
So several cities and counties across the region have been conducting inventories and starting internal systems, of their internal systems. They've started the process, they're meeting with department heads, they're streamlining their processes, streamlining their systems. And one example is our sister city started this process over a year ago. So they conducted an extensive review of every policy and procedure, document and form, to assure that the city has an efficient system for growth and development, to assure that everyone has a full understanding and can easily interpret expectations when doing business. Because sometimes we put things together, right? And our staff and us can pretty well interpret them, but then we give it to someone from the outside, and the complete interpretation is different. So we need to make sure that both parties can clearly interpret and understand when we make these changes. The examples of the sister city was development review process, site plan review, final plans, annexations. They put together systematic flow chart format, along with policies and procedures aligned with each of those flow charts. So that's in answer to your question.
All right, so I wasn't dreaming. Sometimes I'm not sure if my dog was telling me a tale, or I actually heard something.
Site selectors, we, again, I said this last time, we try to get the feedback, sometimes they will, sometimes they won't. And when we do receive it, and it is specific to one city or county, we will give you that information, because the only way that you know and can make changes is if you know, right? You don't know what you don't know, you know what you do know. So it's kind of that scenario.
And have you sent any, any feedback?
We've not received anything.
It was a Pocatello.
Yeah, yeah. We have on a couple of other municipalities too, in our whole region, which isn't bad. So here's another example, preparing for growth now. Another example's Idaho Falls recently launched a new initiative, it's called Imagine If, Imagine Idaho Falls, to bring the community together for a meaningful conversation about growth and how to manage change that growth... change that growth is going to bring to their community. Again, aligned with what's happening over the next decade with the energy sector. A plan to move Idaho Falls forward together. They're launching a website. So just FYI, if you want to search that website out, it's called Imagine IF. It has the project timeline and the resources to understand the challenges and opportunities that the community is already facing. So they have brought community groups together. Conversations will be formed on the basis to help the city put together a new plan for its future. So just kind of, again, another example to bring to the table of what other cities in our area are bringing. Now, let's talk about the elephant in the room. Right. We all got shocked. This hit me, this hit my desk a week ago. A colleague from South Dakota reached out to me and said, are you aware? We were not aware. And it's caught all of us, mayors and commissioners by surprise. But here we are. It affects five cities in Idaho, Idaho Falls, Pocatello, Coeur d'Alene, Lewiston, and Twin Falls. What OMB wants to do is raise the threshold for metropolitan areas from 50,000 residents to 100,000. So the cutoff point has been in place since the 1950s, right? So I think what they're saying is, we haven't done this for so many years. We need to change the course. And I'm going to talk about that decision because I'm going to be very vocal and strong about it. They want to reclassify five cities from metropolitan to micro metropolitan. So based on their description, it's basically a metropolitan is a statistical area that is an area containing a large population nucleus and adjacent communities that have a high degree of integration with that nucleus. Okay? So again, 50,000 or more. They want to increase it to 100,000 or more. The micro metropolitan is basically the same, sort of similar, statistical area closely parallels that of a metropolitan statistical area, but the micro metropolitan statistical area features a smaller nucleus. So interpret it the way you want to. Everybody's interpreting different. I've been following comments that have been made since January and it's, I mean, interpretation is all over the place. I just don't think they're being very clear. So what impact is this going to have, a negative impact? The labor market data for several Bureau of Labor statistic programs will arbitrarily be combined into several geographical areas that quite simply don't make any sense. So in other words, consolidated into one MSA, Boise, which we can't even compare ourselves with Boise and two balanced state areas. This will severely impact data collection, quality, and consistency, as well as the true and accurate picture that we rely on from a city, from an economic development perspective, from a labor statistical perspective. And it will impact Idaho policymakers, public officials, researchers, economic development agencies, and businesses. So it's not good. No way. How you look at it. Loss of federal funding of programs. So if you're changed from a metro to a micro, you're going to lose some federal funding. Those programs fund areas such as education, transportation, sewer systems, and social services. Because metro cities reclassified as micro cities would no longer qualify for these programs anymore. So again, there's another dramatic impact. For rural communities, so we take it another layer and say, okay, how does this affect rural communities? Substantially. Because if we now move Pocatello down from a metro to a micro, you're now competing for federal dollars against a city like Malacca. So at the end of the day, the change that they would downgrade, that a third of our nation, currently 392 MSAs, would be moved into microopolitans, which are now competing against rural communities that are now trying to get their feet back in place after a pandemic. So the action is, OMB is accepting comments, public comments, until Friday, March 19. Ready has reached out to multiple cities, not only across Idaho but several surrounding states. I've reached out to my partners in Utah. I sent an email two days ago to Mayor Casper and Mayor Blatt to say, all right, what are we going to do to pull together to work on this? I also included our Idaho Falls Chamber President and the Pocatello Chamber President here. And then I reached out to Senator Crevel, Senator Rich, and Representative Simpson's office. And they're working on it from DC. Ready suggests the leadership come together to discuss and devise a plan that includes letters to be either collectively or individually submitted. We do not support, Ready does not support this change in any way. Number one, it's just bad timing. We just came out of a pandemic. We are still trying to get our feet planted in place. So we're still dealing with aftermaths and still a pandemic, right? And now you're going to throw this on top of our municipalities. And I just think it is a terrible decision on their behalf. And it's also a move, to me, based on the data that I've read through, it's a move that's not substantiated or valid, valid justified at all.
So Rick-
Will this take congressional authorization to make this change?
It, the information that has been sent out did not indicate that.
That's what I found while I researched it too. That surprises me.
Yeah. And see, again, it's another open piece that you're like, okay, so you have the power and authority as just OMB to make this decision on behalf of our nation without any type of federal interception in any way or vote? Yeah.
And these draconian measures assume that there would be no convincatory changes in those funding programs, that they would stay the same, with the same 50,000-plus population levels.
Roger?
I did a little research on this when I first got the email. I believe, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it seems to me like I came up with 450 communities of 50,000 up to 100,000 in the United States. And that was 200 and some communities that would be the 100,000. One of the things I'm not real clear on is if this is simply a different model for determining size, to put somebody in one category and others in another category without necessarily funding adaptation to it. In other words, it doesn't make sense to me that OMB would throw out 450 cities in favor of 200 cities. Because the demographics do not validate Congress and Office of Management and Budget is a function of Congress. It doesn't make sense to me that they would want Congress to feel like all these cities are alienated now, especially people going back to their home locales. So I'm really struggling with it. I understand that it's got a potential downside, but it also might have a potential upside in that we would be looked at more for who we are instead of lumped in with everybody else's, these mega cities, so to speak. And if that's a, if, I don't know where they're going with this. And I think that's where our dialogue needs to be, is if this is a clarification of the uniqueness of the cities that range between 50 and 100,000, and you're going to look at what their needs are compared to the bigger cities, then that's a clarification I can embrace if it's not going to affect funding negatively. But if it is just a grab by the larger cities over the smaller cities, then I don't think we can, we can be engaged in that.
Well, then you look at the competition too, you know, from the economic development perspective. So what happens is when site selectors run their data points down and they're looking for metropolitans versus microopolitans, where Pocatello and Idaho Falls would show up before, they no longer are showing up, right? So now you've negated their ability to do some creative economic development and growth because you have now made that decision to remove them from that opportunity.
And I know, you know, I mean, data is only as good as the people that look at it want to, want to discover.
Yeah.
And so I'm not sure that this is, I would need clarification to know if it's really going to be a negative thing or if it can be worked with to be a positive thing. Because I think there are a lot of companies that are tired of fighting the big cities and the transportation problems and everything else. And they would want to look at these lower classified cities as, as a great destination point. They're going to be a bigger fish in a smaller-
Well, yes and no. I mean, we already saw, we had 24 prospects last year. I mean, that's the most that we've seen here in our region for years. I don't think we've ever had 24 in a year, to be quite honest. I was excited about that because, you know, coming from Utah, we see higher numbers than that. So to get to 24, I mean, that's a, that's a big benchmark. And we hope we can continue to rise from there as we continue forward. But we're already seeing that. So I don't see that impact. In fact, a lot of people, a lot of companies are saying, we want out of metropolitan. After going through a COVID, you know, we don't want to be in an area where there's a lot of people. We want to go to these smaller areas.
If all I've got to do is push, push a button, and I immediately see that this city is in this category and it's not in that category.
Yeah.
Then that's, that's an ease option for me if I'm a site selector.
Yeah.
I just don't know what the purpose is behind this and I've, until we-
Well, and I wish they would put that in their gut.
You know what I'm saying is-
Right?
Until we're, until the purpose is determined, it's hard to understand what the outcome will be.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there a timeline for OMB?
The public comment is March 19.
No, but I mean, is there a timeline for when they're going to make a decision?
We don't see, in all the data they've published, nothing. In their reports, there's nothing. Just have your public comment.
Because, I mean, I'm concerned about, I mean, not, not only economic development, but if, well, first of all, I'm just, I would just be curious, is 100,000 an arbitrary number? Just, you know, it's like, well, we haven't done this in 70 years, so we need to, let's just double it. And so that, but my concern is with things like PRT, for example, in this town. You know, most of PRT is funded by federal grants. And so if we get downgraded or downsized or whatever we want to call it, then that's just a whole other component to, like, I mean, a company might choose a micro metropolitan area, but then you're talking about the city would have to fully fund public transportation. And that's a huge, anyway, I, so I'm just, I was just wondering if they had announced that they're going to make a decision by-
Keep in mind, they don't have a date there, but there's no OMD director right now. So it's interesting that they're running this, but right now it's interesting.
The inmates are running the asylum right now at OMB?
Well, it's interesting that it's coming out now with this administration we have. It's interesting that there's not a OMD director there. We have been watching this very closely. And we have our directors and our, the different agencies that may be looking at grants and things like that for the city of Pocatello. We're looking into right now to find out what negative impact it does have. We can't say HUD has said that they will grandfather all of the 50, the entitlement cities in. So the CDBG program will stay for today. It will stay the same, but we don't know what that looks like tomorrow. And so those are all the things that we're trying to look at. I know Idaho Falls is looking into it. Pocatello's looking into it. Everybody's looking into it to see what it looks like because ultimately two communities in Idaho end up with this, is Boise and Meridian. We think Napa might be on the verge, but we're not positive of that. So you've got, you've got two communities that would be entitled at that point, which leaves to every other city, if it stayed the same regulations, every other city in the state of Idaho arguing over money, what, competing over different monies and stuff.
Idaho Falls is a lot closer to that 10,000 mark than we are. You know, I mean, they're a lot closer.
Yep.
Especially with all the nuclear projects and everything.
Yeah, the girl was, I mean, it's starting, but it's not in the midpoint.
They're poised to hit that mark-
Yep.
Much sooner than we would ever hit that mark.
One of the things that I would really raise as a flag is not necessarily how the federal government deals with it, but how the state would respond to it. Because you're putting a lot more of the onus into state control. And we, you know, for example, the entitlement city.
Yeah.
Pocatello found a great degree of freedom when we finally got to the level of an entitlement city because it took the state out of the formula. And I really think that's an important factor is to not let the legislature, which micro manages cities but doesn't manage itself very well. And it gives them a status as a deity in regard to this. And I would really say that that is, that's a factor that we got to address in this, as well as what happens on a national level, what it might empower our legislature to do for cities.
Yeah. And there's multiple letters that have been sent to the governor. I've received copies of those. So Ready's right in the middle of all of this communication that's going back and forth across the state. So again, so we're setting up a meeting with Brian and Mayor Casper and Matt and Chip and Ready and others that we can pull to the table to devise a plan. And if, if each of those groups want to go individually, that's fine, but we just, we, we need to have a conversation about it.
And certainly our lobbyist in DC, they're also addressing, we've been in contact with our federal delegation.
Yeah.
And he's there right now on our behalf, working this to understand it more and so-
And Senator Crevel's office is on top of it. So they're keeping Ready advice.
Well, that seems to me that the more unified we are in this, that I would hope that everybody doesn't try to do this on their own. I think a more unified approach-
Yeah, it does look better.
You know, it looks, it just, I just think, well, and it's, and it's easy. I mean, you know, you could, one finger can only push a button, but, you know, one fist is, it just makes, you know, anyway.
Yeah. The last thing is just, I want to thank you for your support and your commitment to regional economic development. This is in print right now, so it's Ready's annual report.
Oh.
Which will be coming out in a few weeks. A copy will be mailed to the city office for you to be able to, to read through. But it really gives us a good overview of what's happening in Southeast and East Idaho. So you won't each receive a copy, just because, again, we, we watch our funds and so we can only print so many copies.
Could you send it electronically so that it could then be sent to us?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I don't care about a paper copy.
Right.
Okay.
So, couple of questions. Is there anything, you talked about virtual visits, and I understand the drone part of it and all of that, but it also seems to me that there might be other aspects to, to a virtual visit. I mean, which, which would include what is available online, digitally, and so forth and so on. And so I'm wondering how we could begin to determine what should we have online, for example, to support these hybrid visits? And you don't have to answer that now, but I guess it's really a question for you also, Brian, or maybe primarily. But how can we, how can we take the information that Teresa is gathering, you know, directly from site selectors about this hybrid model? And how can we ensure that we develop a plan here and, you know, get all the players at the, at the table? And, you know-
If you don't mind, Brian, I'd like to respond to that first before you respond. And I have to compliment the city for the beautiful website that they just launched, that you just launched. It's, it's amazing. It really showcases Pocatello well.
Right.
And if you, if it's linked to Ready, we do have our SureSites program that posts, which developers and realtors post commercial properties, including North Gate, that's available for development. And they can go in and actually get all the statistics per each lot that's available. So-
So we probably don't need to do something-
It would be promoting that sites on our website.
We just need to keep doing what we are doing, but probably add a few more things to it and work with Ready, work with Bannock Development, then we'll be able to-
Well, and if somebody came to Pocatello, I mean, came to our site, and then I'm, for example, and it, you know, probably because I wasn't looking in the right place, but I, you know, it's not immediately apparent that, oh, you can link to the regional, you know, economic development entity here. Oh, you can link to Van County Development here. Oh, you can look, link to, even though a prior discussion understood, Pocatello Development Authority here, you know, so that it's, you don't have to dig. Because, you know, sometimes it can, you know, I mean, then we don't have to do the work, but at least we've got a readily available link that takes them to what you've already got posted.
But I think you bring up a really good point. But I think you bring up a really good point, and that is, if the city doesn't have a section that has, you know, specific sys-site selection, where they can just go straight to that tab site selection, and then that downloads all the critical information they want to see rather than searching multiple pages within your website. That's where a lot of, of organizations are going because, again, site selectors sometimes search your site and you're not even aware they're searching your site. And if they can't find it in 60 seconds or less, you're gone.
So is there a list of things that they're specifically looking for when they...
Yeah, if you look at Ready's website on our front page, those are, that's all statistics, the dashboard, that's all the information that they're looking for. But again, they're doing deep dives as well themselves and getting a lot of access to data points that we're, we're not able to get. Because you're talking $100,000 databases.
Right, right.
Roger.
So how deep a dive did you have to do with the information available? You, you talked about shovel-ready sites and all that. Do you have to get to the detail of there is a very good road, there is water, there is sewer, there...
You take the pro-business approach.
Okay, so those type of things, I would think you'd want to know, how, how close is a railroad connection or...
And the airport.
Yeah, airport, you know, where, if you locate here, how easy is it for your trucks to get on a freeway? Those, those type of things. So, you know, are those the type of things that need to be there? It's three minutes to the freeway with a truckload or something like that?
So who, I mean, in our, in our decentralized sort of department-based city system, I mean, this is clearly a collaborative approach that goes citywide. So Brian, who, who in our system would drive something like this? Because I'm, I'm increasingly concerned, especially after the airport info from Idaho Falls and stuff that we're getting, we're being eclipsed. And so who would drive collecting, determining, you know, with advisement, what information would be critical to, to site selectors? Who would drive the coordination among departments that would be required to get that information there? Who would be the person who collects it and passes it on to IT for them to do? Who would be that person in our, in our current city structure?
So right now, what we're using for the economic development to pull all those together would be Bannock Development. And Bannock Development is working with planning on a regular basis. They're working with our, Public Works on a regular basis. They're working with our building and stuff on a regular basis to get those, that information and put all of that stuff together and so...
So if I call Mia Kate, she'll be, she would be able to speak to, here is her plan that would result in, in what Teresa's referring to? Mia Kate would be my go-to person for kind of tracking our progress?
For, for our economic development and/or our planning director, I think, would be just as, just as well as well because they work very closely together.
So Mia Kate is going to be, I mean, I'm just trying to understand. So she's going to be like meeting collaboratively with all, with Teresa and then with all our departments and saying, "Here's the information I need, you know, public utilities, you know, you need to provide this, planning, you need to provide this, sewers, you need to provide this, whatever." So Mia Kate is our go-to person?
Mia Kate would be the one that would be pulling all those together. She, she meets with Teresa, I believe they meet on a regular basis. She meets with the utilities on a regular basis as well. So she, yeah, no, they, they do that. She does that for Pocatello, for Chubbick, for, meets with other economic development people and so...
That's great, yeah. Because I'd just like to say, okay, what's our timeline? Mia Kate, what's your timeline for pulling this together? You know, so...
I think Mia Kate will be here next month.
Yeah, I'll probably just follow that.
So in, in answer also to that, when we meet on, on a monthly basis with the EDs, we put together different worksheets for them to work from. And we put together, I think it's about 15 pages long, and it's basically, you know, water lines, size of your water line, capacity. We have told all the EDs that if you don't have this information in your back pocket, then here is a worksheet, fill it in and understand what's going on in your city. Because if we have a site selector that comes to us, and some do, they want a 24-hour turnaround. And if you don't have that information in your back pocket, I don't have 24 hours to get it back from you. And so I'm saying, keep this worksheet in place, keep it filled out, keep it updated in your back pocket, because when I call you, in five minutes, I want that worksheet filled in and to me, so I can respond back.
So I have a couple of other points. So you, you mentioned that one of the predictions is that there's going to be a shortage of trained workforce and a temporary, which, you know, who knows? I mean, three weeks or 10 years, but anyway, a temporary glut of low-wage opportunities. And given the fact that Pocatello has a high proportion of low-wage earners, again, based on the 40-plus percent, that sounds like bad news for Pocatello. So I'm not, I'm, I'm...
I'll, I'll give you a good example. So when I was in Utah, we had a lot of employers that had their wages and salaries set, right? Then all of a sudden, Utah gets more and more nationally exposure and companies from different areas that would have never considered Utah before start to consider Utah. So they start moving their companies in and they're saying, "This is a great place to be because, wow, the wages and salaries are so low that I'm actually going to save a substantial amount of money, but I can't pay those low wages. I'm going to bump it up." Well, now your current employers that are in Utah are saying, "Wait a minute, uh-uh, we can't afford to pay those higher." So then it forces the hand, right? That if you need to be competitive, then you need to take a deep dive of your salaries and benefits, and you need to be in comparison with the rest of the nation. And that forced the hand of multiple businesses in Utah. Is that going to happen here? Yes.
So if I were somebody that were in the 40-plus percent and I were trying to think of how I could better myself, would you be a resource for, say, what professions or skill sets?
Yeah, and that's one of the programs...
And you've done some of that, so...
Yeah, that's one of the programs we're working on right now with United Way. We're putting a pilot program together.
So we need collaboration with ISU and other entities. We, we could be proactively addressing the negative aspect. What is it, Mary Kate, whatever her name was that did the Pink Ladies? What was that? It was a cosmetic company. I was in Dallas area when she was there.
Oh, Mary Kate.
Yeah, Mary Kate somebody. Anyway, she said, "Take your lemons and turn them into lemonade." And I kind of think that's what we could do if we are proactively addressing. And I think regardless of what anything's saying, the I-15 corridor and the expansion into Idaho and beyond is going to be something that's the next 30 years or more. You know, regardless of what we're doing, it's, it's going to be by default some growth. And, and for people to understand that and to upgrade their skill sets. And if they're doing it now, it might not pay off tomorrow, but it will pay off in their lifetime.
Yeah, I agree. And we have companies in Utah that are saying, "I didn't sign up for this girl." So they're coming north.
And then they'll end up in Canada.
Yeah, they'll keep moving north.
Chris?
Yeah, so I, I'm trying to read the tea leaves from the airline's perspective. So is that already impossible for me to do? Yes. However, you know, we, we've had conversations here about, you know, trying to expand flights at our airport and all of that, which obviously, if you've got businesses that are trying to send execs around and whatnot, quick connections, et cetera, is a good thing. And, and our experience here has been no way, no how, especially during COVID. And yet, in that same period of time, you know, a new airline and, and new flights in Idaho Falls, all their desks full. And it, and, and I, and I hope nobody interprets this as a, you know, "I don't have faith in our airport" statement, because that's not what I'm saying. But, but there does come a point where, you know, it's no longer economically feasible to have, you know, 350 one-room schoolhouses. And the net result is you end up with a, with consolidated school districts. And so I, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, what, what the fact that Idaho Falls is clearly going to be a much more viable airport in terms of connections and timeliness for most people around here, frequent flyers. What do you, how do you see this new, from my perspective, new development impacting Pocatello's ability to compete regionally for economic development? And maybe that's not a question that can be answered right now. That's fine. You can just tell me that.
Well, again, you want CEOs, that CEOs are going to want to come in and out of a place very quickly. So if I'm a CEO and I have a satellite part of my business here in Pocatello, I want to get into the Pocatello Airport, take care of my business, get back on a plane and get back to my original destination, right? I may or may not want to drive that extra 50 minutes to get to Idaho Falls Airport and then back, because there's basically two hours, expensive time as a CEO, to get back and forth. So I'd say that justifies and actually raises the bar for your Pocatello Airport. But at the end of the day, a lot of the flights that have come in and the airlines that have signed up is because of the strong participation and feedback of the businesses in Idaho Falls that have reached out and supported those efforts.
Well, and, and I understand what you're saying, but I, for example, would drive 40 minutes to Idaho Falls if I could fly to DFW nonstop from Idaho Falls, because that's a huge time saver.
Yeah, the nonstops are definitely...
I mean, that, and so to me, I'm, I'm just wondering, is, is, is not being able to entice airlines, more airlines and more flights, is that at some point going to become an... Is our airport at some point, if it, if we can't grow it, grow it? Will it become an impediment? Would it be more beneficial to say it's just a, you know, municipal airport with, you know, little planes? Or, do you see what I'm saying? I'm just trying to figure out if going forward...
And promote the fact that, hey, we have a direct bus line or Uber or whatever that will take you, you can sign up, they'll concierge service to Idaho Falls. I don't know.
Yeah, I...
I'll enter that discussion to a degree. You're looking on only one-dimensional function of an airport. This airport is probably...
No, I'm in the PLM.
Well, this airport is more suitable for development around it than Idaho Falls could ever dream about in terms of business development around it. It, it's got the chance to be an airpark like Idaho Falls does. Idaho Falls is landlocked. The, in my estimation, the cost of taking down existing structures to put in other structures is, is somewhat prohibitive. It's not extremely prohibitive, but it is somewhat prohibitive. And so part of what we need to do is understand the marketing of our airport as a both-and rather than just the one-dimensional of, of a commercial airline. And, and I, and I think the more we use the airport, the more commercial airlines will feed off of that, too.
Well, so how, you know, again, it gets me back to what's the plan and who's the person? Because if, if, you know, because these things to me are, are all interrelated. So if we want to pursue becoming a food, a, a center of excellence, you know, in, in ag products, food and ag, then that ties into, you know, supporting Frigitech and, and any satellite, you know, businesses that might want to be here because Frigitech is here. And then that ties into, you know, developing, you know, business-based transport flights, you know, to transport those goods if, if, for some of them. I mean, and these things are all interrelated, and I just am having difficulty seeing in our system, I mean, putting that on airport management and saying, "Figure this all out." I mean, maybe that's in our system, maybe that's what we do. But, but there has, to pursue what you're talking about requires a plan, and it requires a multi-year plan. And who, who in our system in Pocatello, who, who is doing that work?
Planning, 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 planning.
So planning is taking, is dealing, is doing, is long-range planning for the airport?
Planning is putting together the comprehensive plan for the, the city of Pocatello. It's updated every five to seven years.
But is that, I, I'm not, that's land use roughly?
So currently, the airport is working on getting a consultant to produce an airport plan for the Pocatello Airport. And we're in the process of working on that right now. And there'll be a whole component of the comprehensive plan that talks about the airport. So absolutely, the city is, is looking at the airport. It is a huge asset that we need to really grow and encourage.
Right.
And, you know, we talked about the land around, around the airport and the potential that's there is enormous, and it becomes something extremely important and vital, way beyond what it is currently being used for. There's so many activities that go on in the airport that are flight-related that aren't passenger planes. Passenger is, is just a small component of the airport service. That's not the economic driving force of the airport. It's all the ancillary services that go through that airport that we need to serve the community, to serve the businesses in the community. The passenger aspect of it is miniscule. That's, that's not the priority. The priority is how do you get flights in there to serve the, the businesses and drive the economy? The passengers don't come with it.
So, so who, because creating the plan for this, "We need to do this, and we need to do this, and we need to do this," is terrific. But then, how does it get implemented? Is planning, who, who contacts our local businesses and gets with them and develops? Who, who is that driver in our city system?
That will be the airport, that will be the planning department, and, and any economic, any other economic development agencies like Ready, like, you know, those are, those are the drivers. That's who pushes it.
So if I, who's my go-to person for, how's the airport plan proceeding?
So you want, Alan is probably who you'd want to talk to initially, and I'm working closely with Alan to help develop that plan.
Okay, and, and then, okay. All right, great. And is there a timeline for that airport?
We're just in the starting phases of that plan.
Okay.
And I don't know what plan is in place currently. I haven't dealt into that yet, but there is, we're in the process of updating or creating this new plan.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, thank you. And then the last thing that this brings me to is, I fell into a conversation with, with the building, with building, just by accident. And there was apparently a, a new business, I don't know the details of the business or anything, that, that is here or was looking to come here. And, and they were begging for some kind of, I mean, they called it a business license because that's the term they're used to. But they need... But they needed it for their insurer or something, and they were, well, can't you just write me a letter, you know, and obviously, Building was saying, no, we don't have such a thing, I can't manufacture it for you. And so, my question to, for Teresa is, is there some value as part of this more comprehensive approach for site selectors, to having some sort of low-key, not, we give you permission to do business here, but some kind of low-key business registration, so we actually have a profile of, you know, what is, what is the economic profile of our, of our community? Because site selectors are talking about big companies, but there's, under a big company, if it doesn't underpin the company, it underpins the people who work for the company. Is there any value in that, or is that just...
So, site selectors have scorecards, okay? You don't see, they will not, that's a bible to them, so they, they, that's personal to them, they won't show their scorecard. But each, each site selector has their individual scorecard, and in your community is ranked based on where you place in that scorecard. So, I would have to say, it's, it's, it's a crystal ball.
Okay, okay.
It's the best way for me to describe it.
This council has discussed business licenses and has decided that it's not going to be moving forward as a city, so I don't know why we keep talking about business licenses.
Well, no, I don't think we have.
I actually asked if we could get it back on the agenda.
We had the discussion with this very council, and this very council said no.
Well, no, no, no.
Just a couple months ago, I sent you a list of things that I would like to see put back on agenda, and one of those was discussion on a business registration. So, I remember that conversation.
So, this council said no, and I'm happy to have the discussion again, because I 100% support it.
Great, great.
But that's a different discussion than probably for Teresa to be in the middle of.
Well, I was just wondering whether or not it would just a factor involved in this.
Why don't we go ahead and ask, is there any other questions directed for Teresa? I just have one. I thought it was ironic that the people moving in, greatest group was retirees, because in essence, every time you get a retiree, you've got a small business. Because if you've got a couple coming in, they've both got their retirement funds that are set, that's better than most businesses that can come in, because they don't know how long they're going to have. So, if we're getting a, and I think I calculated 13.3% difference, it looks to me like retirement efforts to recruit that group and to deal with that group, if we get somebody that settles here for 20, 20 years, 25 years, some people retire at 50, so who knows? But if we could get that group in more, that's like recruiting a whole bunch of small businesses every time somebody moves here for retirement.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, and, and I think that also their background, so they may be retired CEOs, or, you know, school administrators, or whatever it may be. And so, what are we doing as a community to integrate them in as kind of subject matter experts in different committees and others? And I, I think that the city's doing a great job of that, and, and I would have to say...
And the enhancement of tourism, which is another industry, that retirees can...
And then their friends come to visit them and see the beautiful place, and decide they're going to move here, too.
And all you've got to do is go to our golf course, and you'll see that we can sell more season passes. You know, there's all kinds of things that happen when we do that.
Well, and that's, you know, it's the reason why we purchased our home here, because, you know, I could have moved Idaho Falls, but we purchased our home here because of the beautiful area. I'm used to mountains, I'm not used to mountains being clear away from me, I'm used to mountains being on top of me, and they are here. And so, it's just, it's just a beautiful area with a lot to provide.
So, one fragment of economic development strategy could be a conscientious effort to recruit retirees.
Yeah, yeah, and tracking them in when they move into the community, and getting to know them and their backgrounds, and putting them to work, that's what they want to do.
And, and so, the preparation part of that would be to find ways to organize more engaging things for retirees.
New Knowledge Adventures.
New Knowledge Adventures.
Senior Ventures, there you go.
Okay. Thank you. Teresa, thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Teresa. You got, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Council, we're going to go ahead and take a break.
And you're going to send us the digital...
The report, yeah, I'll get, I'll get the final copy from, from our graphic services.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and take a break, council, I need to go and have them order, bring some, get some lunch brought in for us, and so, why don't we take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll go from there.
Lunch is here.
Oh, lunch is here?
So, we're going to take a 10...
We're going to take a break now, and we're going to have lunch.
Mary, can I get, address the two per second? So, I am not sure if, how long the lunch works, but I, we've got a commitment at 1:00, and I don't know, maybe I can be pushed to the end then? I don't know what the timeframe is that we're looking at.
Um...
Sorry, I need to...
We can move to item number 7 from the last, get the item there, and we'll take care of the commitment.
We can, we can try to do that, yeah.
Is that possible?
Yeah, it's possible.
Are the people here?
Well, they're here to, they're here, they could do it right now. All right, we're not going to break. I'm going to break, but everybody else is going to stay here, and we will move to Agenda Item Number 7, which is Nuisance Code Modifications, Police Department. The police department with staff will present proposed revisions to Municipal Code 8.14.130, Abatement of Nuisances, and I will be right back.
Sorry about that. I am Mindy Anderson, I'm a code enforcement officer with the police department, and I started this position mid-September. And part of that, I'm earning the new position and earning the job, and as I'm working on my, I guess, I call them my inherited properties from the previous code enforcement officer, I was researching some of the ones that had been in my case log for a while. And part of that was reviewing our current city code, and, well, from what I understood, we, you know, we make contact with the property owner, then we send out a letter, and then if there's a, there's a final step in the process, which is abatement. So, as I'm researching it, I'm looking through our current ordinance, and I'm not seeing really any details of abatement. And I'm finding more details of abatement in, like, the tree code, in the 9.16, and there's a section on graffiti, and it goes into pretty good detail, which is what I'm recommending in the, the nuisance code of the abatement section, is to expand that so that the citizens have an idea of what they can do to, I guess, stop the abatement or something along those lines, and then we have clear direction as a code enforcement officer to be able to pursue action if we don't have voluntary compliance. The properties that I am kind of, one of them that's almost three years old is one over on Washington, and the property owner is deceased, and this is one of my properties I inherited, and I feel like if we had a clear direction of an abatement section in our nuisance code, we would have been able to address this property a lot sooner, rather than now, we're three years into it, and we're to this point now, what's our clear direction to be able to get this property taken care of? And so, part of that, I also did some research of what properties that we have abated and sent on to, yeah, lien onto the property. And at that time, I searched in October, we had four pending properties that were going to go to the county as a lien. And in researching that, I found that probably didn't go through the entire process to even abate the property. So, that's why I bring it to you to update this section of the nuisance code to have a section on the abatement.
Thank you.
Yes. Any questions?
I could say, anything that can improve this on Ford.
Yeah.
One of the things I would add to this is the definition of nuisance. I think if we have to keep going back to a property time and time again, it's a nuisance property. You know, because I, we've got one in my neighborhood that is years and years and years, and the only way it gets taken care of is somebody files a complaint, and then they respond. If they haven't learned in 20 years how to take care of their property, then it is a nuisance property. You know, so I would really appreciate a definition of what nuisance is, and there might be so many calls on it in a certain period of time.
In this code?
Yeah.
You want a definition in there?
Yeah, I would like the definition to allow nuisance to be any property that gets X number of calls in a certain period of time. Because that way, we don't need you guys as our code enforcement going back year after year after year to get somebody to comply. They either step up, or they don't, in the city.
We, we will address the property at the first complaint, so we don't, we don't wait until after there's been a couple complaints on the property, the very first complaint, we go and do a start in our investigation.
Yeah, but it's just, this property is unkept, and, and the main thing is, you know, they've done things to it over the years.
So, it kind of gets, it gets cleaned up a little bit, and it just goes right back?
It gets cleaned up a little bit, but to get it mowed, then you've got to call in, and to get trees trimmed, and all that stuff, you know? We should be able to define a nuisance property as something that is continually is having to be addressed.
And part of what we, as code enforcement officers, can do, if we have that property that we are addressing year after year, every six months, if we're, if after the first time we go and address it, and it gets cleaned up, and then we go back, or we get a complaint six months later, and we go back, at that point in time, we can talk to them and say, okay, we've already dealt with this property on three or four, or one or two, two different occasions, and you haven't kept it up, it's just, we can just issue a misdemeanor citation, and usually, that will be like, ooh.
Well, and technically...
Tell the law just later, change it.
And it's, there's a fine line between keeping up with the property and hassling them, I understand that.
Right.
But, this property could be cited all year round, because if weeds aren't growing, the snow's not shoved, you know, stuff like that. It's just, it's unkept, it's unattended, and the only time they do it is to get their tail out of the wringer.
Right.
And so...
And unfortunately, we have a lot of properties like that.
But, but you know what I'm saying, is, a chronically nuisance property ought to be defined, I think. Claudia?
Could you?
Go ahead, Claudia.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Claudia.
Oh, could you briefly, the other day, actually, I was somewhere, and somebody asked me, how does code enforcement work as far as a property? Could you just give me, like, the Reader's Digest version? So, so say I call on this house, you guys come out and do what, and then, and then, what happens after that?
Kind of the process.
Yeah.
Use Arabian as an example, Mindy.
Okay, so, that was the one thing that when I started this position, position in September, that I wanted to have a clear outline of what code enforcement officers' steps are for the process. And part of that, in working with my lieutenant, is we wanted to commit, make it more of a community involvement type situation, where we actually reach out to the property owner, they're not getting a letter right off the bat, we're calling them, we're making contact with them, and learning the situation about what's going on. So, for example, on Arabian, I got, we had, we had parking complaints up there, and then he was moving the equipment onto the property, and then I got a direct phone call, and so I went up there and did my investigation. Well, I reached out to the property owner, I wasn't able to make contact. So, at that point in time, if I can't make contact with them, I have no option other than to send a letter to them. And so, when I did my follow-up on Tuesday, because I have until the 8th, they have 14 days from the time that they sent the letter to get the nuisance violation taken care of. And if after 14 days, I go back and re-inspect, and if that violation hasn't been satisfied, then I can issue a misdemeanor citation or civil penalties if I'm following our nuisance code. So, the property up on Arabian had a couple different codes of violation, the nuisance code, and then parking the, the fifth wheel right on the front lawn. And so, because of that, I just was able to just go in and issue a misdemeanor citation because of the compliance was not, did not happen.
And maybe boarding house issues, it's, that's a bit more unclear.
Yeah, boarding house more falls under, I believe, planning and development, I want to say?
So, once you issue a misdemeanor citation, then it goes in front of the magistrate judge, is that...
Yeah, yeah, and then legal works with me, and say, okay, I have this property owner coming up for inspection, or coming up for court, will you go out and get updated pictures? And so, I'll go out, do, take updated pictures, and then they're able to make any decisions once they go to court.
So, would it be possible to just have what you just explained, could that be, since you're making contact, which is great, you know, rather than just sending a letter?
Right.
I mean, could that be just a little three-by-five card, you know, that you hand the person who, who called, and so that they know, you know, okay, it's 14, I mean, so that they have some idea, because...
If, I, if, so when I make contact, or if I have someone that makes contact with me, like via the, the service request, or they call the hotline, or they call me directly, I will take the time and I will follow up with them if I get contact information. Sometimes I'll just get a message on my phone that says, hey, there's an issue on this property at here, and I don't have anybody to call back.
I think what you're driving at, Chris, and I'm sorry, I, I think what you're driving at is if we could get Logan to write an article that talks about code enforcement and makes the community more educated about the process we use.
Right. I actually had, and I'm not sure, I haven't had a chance to get to it yet, but I wanted to reach out to other cities and see how, kind of how they handle their code enforcement. Are they, how proactive are they, how, what do they do as far as the education piece goes to their property owners? All of those different aspects, and try to get more, our goal is to get voluntary compliance and learn what the situation is. Like, I had a property on Eldridge, that, I've had a couple of properties, actually, one was on, was one of my inherited properties on Main Street, I think it was Main Street. Anyway, when I, the letters had already sent out, and so I was sending out, I started the job, okay, I need to send out a $50 penalty, okay, so I'm sending out the $50 penalty, and then still nothing getting done, and then it's to the $100 penalty, I'm like, why am I not, why are they not contacting me, I guess is what my perception was. So, then, I found out by calling around that the homeowners, neither one of them were living there, one of them ended up having a stroke and was living with her son, and then the other one, he had fallen and hit his head, and actually was in a nursing home. And so, I reached out to Pocatello Neighbor Works, and I said, hey, I have this property that I need to help getting cleaned up, do you have some resources? And they had volunteers, there was already a dumpster there, because the son was working on the inside of the home, and they got that property cleaned up, and that was just because I reached out to somebody to try to find out the situation. And I've done that with numerous properties, and that's the, that's the path that code enforcement is leading towards, is learning what the situation was and finding solutions to be able to help them out. So, when it comes to the abatement, that's really going to be the very last step, and it's probably going to be for those properties that the property owners are deceased, and there's nobody to make contact with.
Or it's just one of our classic ones, was when somebody just wouldn't pay attention at all. So, I...
Yes, I have a couple things. First of all, I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for being willing to take more of the proactive approach, rather than just the, you know, reactive to, oh, I got a complaint, so here I have to send a letter. Thank you very much for that, and thank you for trying to make it more clear and efficient with the abatement process. This council has had a lot of discussions about code enforcement. I think the will of our whole council is for our city to undergo beautification and improvement and everything, so I just want to say, I am in full support of anything that we can do to help you to do your job more efficiently and better, and if you need some more teeth, even beyond this, I think that's great. Now, one of the things I remember when we talked a couple years ago about this was narrowing up the timeframe, so like, when it does get to the point that you have to send a letter, really, I don't know why someone needs two weeks to mow their lawn. I think we talked about, it probably only takes a couple days, but maybe we should do...
And that's where the contact is coming in, that's where the contact is coming in the play. We're making contact with them right off the bat, we're starting it at day one, and we know, okay, I, I don't have a day off until I'm working seven days straight, so I don't have a day off until this day. Oh, cool, I'll just put that in my report, and I'll update that, and I will inspect it after this day, it's done, closed, case, the case is closed.
For sure, definitely, but I'm saying, even once it gets to the point that you do have to send them a letter, I still think that two weeks is way too... I still think that two weeks is way too long because yes, there will be some situations where maybe somebody, you know, had a surgery or they had some extenuating circumstance, but they can always communicate with you in that situation and get, and work with you on that. But just the ones that are totally blowing you off and not responding, I feel like we should be able to tighten that up and get moving on an abatement or something rather than just letting it languish and go on forever. So I thought we had made that maybe adjustment or maybe it didn't get communicated down, but I would like to see us, if that's okay, do things to tighten that up.
We had our code enforcement in there when we were having those discussions and so it definitely got to the end of the row. It's just a matter of doing it, so.
Right, yeah, so I would like to see that.
And that's definitely our, that's the goal is for us to definitely tighten that up. And if they are just being obstinate, then it's just you're going to get a misdemeanor citation. Our hands are tied when it comes to some of those things. If you're not going to do it for yourself, and then we've also worked with legal, that part of the process, if they are not abiding by what legal's telling them to do, then legal says, okay, you're not doing it, so we're going to evade it and here's your fine.
Could you put together a timeline, kind of that, you know, that tightens things up and just bring it to us so that, you know, so that it, that gets implemented? Because I think that's...
Because we ran into situations in the past, I mean, speaking with, you know, other code enforcement people, that they would say, well, by the time I sent them this letter and then they didn't respond, two weeks went by, then I sent them another letter, two weeks had gone by, then by the time I, you know, and like the whole season is gone, so the summer's over and then by then it's hard to go in and abate and it's into the next year. And I think that's exactly the... To Roger's point too, is sometimes you'll have somebody that you'll get to the point where you'll send them a notice that says, you've got to take care of this and they'll kind of go in and do it to the most mediocre standard so that they can come into compliance with the law. But then two months later or the next year or whatever, it's the same property over and over again. I know when I've done a ride along with code enforcement before, I said, what about that property? Oh, I've been out there, I go out there every year, I get a complaint about them. And so I think that's what he's talking about is some of those that they do come into compliance, but then they come up again. If there's something that we can do to support you to help address those, we would be happy to do that.
And that's a proactive approach, is, you know, as a code enforcement officer, I know the areas or I know the properties that are reoccurring, I need to be better at staying on top of those before the complaint comes in and that's where we'd like to go towards.
But if there's something we can do to help you with that, I would, I would be happy to do it. So I was going to make another recommendation that we go ahead and...
Mayor's newsletter, article in the mayor's newsletter.
Oh, what I was going to say is that I support what you're bringing to us now as far as the abatement language and so I'm not sure if legal has reviewed that yet or not, but I would recommend that we proceed with having them review it more if they need to or add any additional, you know, teeth, I guess, for lack of a better word, that can help you accomplish your, you know, your desire and our desire. And anything we can do, I would, I would say let's bring that along. I hope that's another meeting.
Okay, Linda?
And I agree with everything Heidi said, but I do have a question. And I don't know how to deal with this, I am going to sort of complicate things here, but, and this came up in our conversation a couple of years ago too, is there are the people out there who just don't want to do what they're supposed to do, you know? They don't want to mow their lawn, they don't want to trim their trees and, you know, and they avoid you and they do, when they do get caught, they do the minimum and then they go right back to being bad. So there are the people who are just kind of being bad citizens or bad property owners. But there's also situations that, I mean, I know of a few personally where we have really bad repeat offenders and there are serious mental illness issues and/or drug issues. And I know those properties are really difficult to deal with because it's not a matter of, you know, they just don't feel like mowing their lawn or something, you know? Often, it's much more complicated than that. And so I'm not sure whether you can really even answer this, but I don't know, how do we deal with those situations where there's somebody that has other issues that really complicate the situation?
I think we can learn, I think some of those, those are more probably tenants and so...
Some of them are property owners.
Yeah, I've dealt with a lot of tenants that are more along those lines that you're talking about. And so with the tenant situation, it's all, actually a little bit easier for a code enforcement officer because we can work with the property manager or the owner and they have more rights to go through the eviction process if that's the route they need to go to get the property in compliance. But yeah, the ones that are struggling, that are...
I'm asking more about the owners, yeah.
That are property owners that are, I think there's different avenues for us to maybe reach out, maybe learn more of what's going on and maybe reach out to other programs and say, hey, is there, you know, like, if there's something going on with mental illness? And I haven't dealt with something like that yet, so I would probably just pursue it more and see if there's other programs or other agencies that we can reach out to and say, hey, you know, I'm seeing this with this property, you might want to reach out to them and see if there's other mental illnesses going on.
And I guess the main example that I see are what are often referred to as hoarder houses, but that behavior, I mean, it's a nuisance and it's a problem, but it's also a direct result of mental illness usually. It's not some other problem there, it's like, it's a behavior.
On Seventh? So I don't know if you've noticed...
Yes, that's one of them.
Yeah, so...
The one house on Seventh.
And I'm sorry...
And there's one on Twelfth. I haven't seen the one on Seventh recently, but the one on Twelfth I see every day.
I know the one on Twelfth is from what, so I'm, this is kind of like not in my area, but I kind of know the situation going on. So the one down here on Seventh, I mean, that's been a problem property ever since I started working for the city and that's been nine years. And so my coworker reached out to Lieutenant, you know, I've got this guy, I keep taking him to court, I think that he's been issued several citations, he'll kind of bring it to compliance and then he just goes right back. Well, Lieutenant kind of looked outside the box a little bit and said, I believe this gentleman lives in an area where we can reach out to his church organization. And as, his church organization? And as soon as that happened, I don't know if you've driven past that property, but it's like 100% better. Do we still have a little bit of problems? Yes, there is, but for the most part, then the property, the whole front of the property is pretty much cleaned up and put out of sight from the public view.
And part of the reason I'm asking this is because, you know, from our side, the city and the city council and everything, you know, it's a frustration, like how do we deal with that? And it's more complicated than, you know, just somebody who doesn't feel like mowing their grass. But the other reason is other citizens who are negatively impacted, like their neighbors or whatever, and their frustration of, you know, what about my rights, you know? And how long the process takes, you know, back to your point. And in these situations, it takes even longer because it is more complicated. But the frustration of citizens who through no fault of their own, you know, their property value or their life, quality of life is impacted and there doesn't seem to be anything we can do about it to help them. So that's, I do hear from citizens who live next to places like this, who are very upset and say, you know, I understand that that person has rights and you have to work with them and, you know, take care of their rights, but what about mine? And I understand their frustration. So what do we do?
So let me help you with that a little, if I can. We've worked, the three of us together, between Steve, Heidi, Mindy and I, trying to redirect. And as you ask and you say, well, what can we do to help? One of the big things that we look at on all this is, is property rights are so important to us. They're so fundamental to our constitutional values, our way of life. And one of the things we've included on all this in our discussions is we need to find better resources. Just writing somebody a ticket, criminalizing their lifestyle, to me, is very problematic. And we have a huge history of it doesn't solve the problem. The property on Seventh, we tried something a little bit different and found really good success there, is just one example. And so what we need is more ideas and more community resources. We live in a community for a reason and it's to take care of each other. And so when we see those things, we need to dig into people's lives a little bit. Where do you go to church? What organization are you affiliated with? Can I have a youth group come help you? Can I have, what we call an elders corps come help you? There's lots and lots of things. Sometimes it's the development, the PDA. Every property is going to be a little bit different.
Civic groups, scouts.
C-cause services or some...
Yeah, I think our limitation is how we're looking and thinking about the problem and addressing it and we need to know our neighbors. We talked earlier when Akila and Sarah and Wasps were here and we were, you know, talking about supporting the police. We're a community and we work together. And one of the reasons, you know, and I spend a lot of time, I have a world outside of police work, it's an academic world. And as I teach in that academic world, we're saying, as we look at our communities and our policing and how we do things, what works and what doesn't work, what's the research saying? And the research is very, very clear. When police officers are part of the community, they're integrated in the community, we live here, we play here, we go to school here, we go to church here, we do all of those things. Unlike the cities where we are seeing the major problems, those officers aren't part of that community. We bless them in, so to speak. They travel in, they do the job, then they leave. And those people are not part of their lives. Like Pocatello, the people here are part of our lives. You are our family. But likewise, these people, whether they have mental health problems or just illnesses, what have you, maybe they're old, they're part of our lives. And so if we want to solve this problem from code enforcement, we've got to become more community oriented, more part of their life.
And I think that's where I was going with this, is sometimes just getting more strict in terms of, you know, writing more tickets or sending them or writing a ticket sooner or, you know, in some situations, that might be warranted, but in some situations, it's not going to help anything.
That's right.
And we need to look at it maybe on a case by case basis, but have some flexibility of how do you work with the person in that case? What is the situation?
And everybody's going to be different.
And that's kind of our change and our focus is, you know, and it's new. I mean, we've been doing this since about September, when Mindy came into this office. She has some wonderful ideas, she's very, unamenable in the nicest way. She's very aggressive, but very proactive, very individual.
Let's call it that, proactive.
And the kind of individual that we need in that kind of a job, right? But it still comes back to, we have to as a police department, go out and knock on the door. Just sending a letter or just using the quote unquote official channels is very ineffective. I think you will continue to see marked improvements as we move forward through our season because we're taking the time to go knock on the door and say, hi, how are you? What's going on here? And how do we make some changes?
I even started text messaging because, you know, if I'm not getting a phone call, I'm like, all right, everybody answers a text message, I'm sending them a text message and I get response back when I don't get one from a phone call.
Do you remember, recall, like the health department? Because a lot of those, I mean, I'm not talking about the ones where they just don't mow their lawn, but like the one on Seventh and, I mean, there are some properties where, I mean, you know that there's stuff living in that backyard that is not good.
And there are properties that do take a while. I've been involved in abatement properties where at the end of the day, we burned it down. It took a lot of resources and a lot of different players like the health department to get that far. Those are the rare exceptions, but it does happen.
Okay, so you guys do.
Chris?
Yeah, so Yahoo, thank you both very much. So how does this new approach get institutionalized so that it's not person dependent, but it becomes the go-to procedure and process?
That's what the manuals for, that's the manual that put it together.
The short answer to that is, is police departments are king of writing policies.
And so this is getting, that's getting updated.
And Mindy is developing a very clear orderly policy that speaks to the timelines, tightening this up. One of my huge dissatisfactions is how long it takes.
Right. And that's the citizen's biggest frustration too, I think, is they don't understand everything that we're going through and they see it just taking forever and feel like we're not working on it.
And then my, my second question is how, I mean, what, from my previous world, what you're talking about is finding solutions to end a behavior, which doesn't mean there aren't consequences as part of that, but instead of being punishment based, you're solution based. I mean, that's, and which, I mean, I agree 100% that solution based works way better than punishment.
I would say, if they're going to get a citation, if you're, if you're just going to go and you're just going to issue a citation, what's someone going to do? They're going to dig their heels in and they're going to drag that on forever. If you're working with them, they're going to be more apt to say, oh, okay.
Which is not to say there aren't consequences because I also believe that when you choose to behave in certain ways that are detrimental, that there need to be consequences. So part of your solution based approach is clearly having more community resources. So what is your thumbnail guesstimate of how you're going to put together that kind of a network of community, you know, based? Because there are organizations, I mean, some of it, it's going to be ad hoc, you're going to go in, you know, it'll be a church or a neighbor or the son who lives across town and it's just...
I wish it was as simple as being able to say, I'm going to do this and this and this and delineating it, like so many city policies and things that you do. But because these are such unique cases and such unique individuals, it is going to have to be very ad hoc. But from our standpoint, much more timely. Cases aren't going to linger because we're just not going to allow it. We've got a protocol in place that within the guidelines of our existing policies and ordinances, we will follow, but we will make sure that it happens. So that's what we're going to do on our end and we're going to make those personal contacts.
But for example, with Linda's, if you've got a person who has mental illness issues, I mean, if I don't, it might be possible, for example, to establish a working relationship with some other organization in town whose area of expertise might be working with mentally ill clients. And so when you run into that situation, it's not a cold call.
Correct.
It's basically, you've already got, you know, essentially an MOU, so to speak. I'm not, I don't mean formally, but you essentially have an understanding of, so, you know, what happens when we run into that and it doesn't, you're not, you know? And again, and that can be institutionalized on their end so that if there are director changes or whatever, then you don't have to start all over. So that's what I'm asking about is, again, it's so many times, we just, I think that it takes some effort to de-silo and to create these collaborative, I'll call them networks, even though that's a word that I'm sure we all hate by now, but, but, but it's possible.
Yes, and then that's where, you know, to what Heidi was talking about earlier, how can you help us?
Right.
That's it. Help us build those networks, make those connections, find those people, find those resources.
So then get, tell me, tell me, if I'm going to be the action person, you know, tell me, would you please call these five people and here's, here's what you, you know, here's, here's how, I mean, do you see what I'm saying?
I do. So I'm going to ask it to you from a different perspective of, and it's like the property on Seventh. It was just an idea that came to our mind at that time and said, well, here's a different way.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to look at you and say, who do you know?
Right.
Our capacity is limited by our thinking.
Right.
But I've got five, six more people here that can help me think bigger. So help us think bigger and then think about those solutions. And when it comes to mind, say, Lieutenant Walker, here's a resource that you can consider for this area and we'll be all over it.
Okay. Right, I got one. Okay, Roger? I just talked to Jared because there's a fine line between what we can develop and what we can't. If it's a mental health issue, we cannot make a presumption of sharing a mental health issue because we're getting into privacy issues there.
That's what complicates it.
Yeah, and so somehow, but we can talk public record and we can talk, we don't know what's going on with this person, we've issued citations that aren't being responded to, given notices that aren't being responded to. Do you know this person? Can you intercede for us? That's difference than going and saying presumptively.
We've already diagnosed them.
Yeah, and so those are...
And then that's, you know, that's why I speak about this particular property in vague terms, to protect the confidentiality and the privacy, but went to organizations and resources that have some of that inside knowledge.
Yeah, and that's where we got to count on them knowing something that we can't diagnose or announce ourselves.
Right.
Right. Then I have one more question, which is probably for Jared. Jared, this, I mean, this great updating work makes me wonder, what is our annual kind of rollover that we go, we look at our ordinances on some kind of a, you know, year, year rotation so that we were constantly updating and revising because, so it's not person dependent? But what's our calendar for reviewing ordinances?
We don't have a set schedule for reviewing the ordinances. There are so many, involve so many departments and so many people, but we always are willing to look at things and look at adjustments as needed. And so, yeah, there's not a revolving schedule for that review. If it's working and we don't have issues with it, it pretty much gets left alone. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Might not be the answer you're looking for, but that's the, I mean, from end to end, are, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages of people?
Right, no, I, yeah, I understand that, but, you know, every, all hundred pages don't pertain to the police department and all hundred pages don't. And so, it's like, I mean, it's like a, you know, a school district policy manual, but they get reviewed cyclically to make sure that they're responsive and timely and et cetera.
Well, I think our departments are actually looking at the policies, not the policies, but the ordinances that they are bound by on a regular basis. And when they find them where they're contradicting each other and stuff, then they bring it to legal's attention, they bring it to our attention, and then we run into a discussion like we're having right now with the...
Yeah, that's a better way to put it. I don't think there's one person or one department that looks at everything from beginning to end, but each is always reviewing it all for sure.
And so this is a review of what we needed to add to it to help, and so that's why we're here today. But we have that happening often on a regular basis with planning. Planning seems to have an awful lot of, planning and building will have a lot...
So who's the driver? Do I just call, just call Josh and say, when was the last time you reviewed your ordinances? How's that going?
Yeah, you can see when he, and they won't be reviewing them unless they run into an issue or a situation. They talked about reviewing the ordinance today on having two or three dogs because somebody's asked why, what's wrong with me having three dogs? I think I should have three dogs. Well, so they pulled the ordinance up and that's how they get more, more attention than, I haven't had a problem with this ordinance, let me go see if I can fix it so I can't have a problem with it or something.
You know, because there's that old story, of course, about the fact that there's still, you know, that in City X, there's still an ordinance about, you know, how be hitching your horse to the post outside the drugstore.
Yeah.
It's still on the books and, you know.
Can I just, do we, I agree with Heidi and I think we should move forward with, if the next step is legal review of your verbiage, I think we should at least move, move so that legal can make sure that, and I agree with your, you know, having a definition, nuisance property is defined as not just the infractions, the list of infractions, but also the fact that we're repeatedly, you're basically a repeat offender, you know, and...
They don't have a code for it, Jared. Nuisance is defined, they don't have a code.
Yeah, nuisance is, it's not only...
Not within this department, yes. Well, but I'm just saying that we shouldn't have to spend time and resources going back and back and back to the same place. The house in my neighborhood's been that way for 25 years and, or more. And it shouldn't be dependent on somebody complaining year in, year out. Somewhere, it's just a chronic nuisance that needs to be dealt with so it's no longer a nuisance.
And I don't know if that's definitely probably in the code. I think that's more in our internal procedures that we need to address that.
But somewhere, I think we need to make it legal that we, either this place gets up to a standard or we're going to abate it. You know, we're going to go to the next level.
Heidi?
Yeah, I was going to say, I agree with you, Roger, and I think maybe it's not a definition of nuisance per se, but just somehow to make sure that we're addressing that concern. Last time we, one of the last times that we've talked about it, because we've talked about it a lot, but I had saved an article and I just wanted to throw it out there for your consideration. First of all, I want to say, I so appreciate your idea of first talking to the person, calling them, texting them, you know, getting the ball rolling that way before going through the, you know, paperwork. Waiting for the mail to get there. And that's for expense too, right? Mailing out stuff and postage and all of that, right? So I appreciate that. I definitely appreciate the comments that were made about sometimes people have extenuating circumstances and we need to work with them and we need to find solutions. This is to address maybe some of the things that are not resolved by those efforts, if you know what I mean? Like sometimes there's just a stinker who's like, bring it on, I'm not going to do what you say, right?
They just want to fight.
Yeah, so for those situations, this example was a city, the city of Franklin, I think it's in Ohio, so it's a different state, but they only have a five-day compliance period. They tightened it up, and if they don't comply in that five days, that city will go in and immediately abate. They'll mull on for them, they'll haul the trash for them, they'll do whatever. Then they also charge an administrative fee of $250 in addition to the abatement amount. And then if they don't pay immediately that administrative fee, they get another $50 penalty. I mean, they just really get the ball rolling on stuff like that. And I'm not saying it has to be exactly that, but if there are things like that that we can support you and help you on those tough situations where they're just blowing you off, you know, I would be glad to do that. And just to kind of give you an example of why I feel that way, many of you know I own a property management company, right? So sometimes we'll have a property where somebody will say, I'm switching over and we're going to switch the management to you, it's been with another manager. And when we take it over, the old manager will say, you know what, about 50% of these people are really slow, they don't pay till like the 20th of the month, you know, they just, they're bad, they're, it's, you're going to really struggle. Well, we have found more times than not, all we do is we say, hey, there's a new rule and it will be by this date, and if not, you're going to be held to the, you know, to the fee and we're going to escalate. And magically, they become the best residents ever and they always pay on time and they're not a problem. And so maybe if some of that looming higher dollar amount threat helps them, I'm not saying to do it to be super punitive or, you know, really stick it to people, but if that would help in any way, I'm just throwing it out there for consideration.
You're inspiring. Mindy, what, I'm looking at the time, you've got to leave, and so with that, move forward with it. That's what I'm hearing. Let's move forward.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we will go ahead.
Go to lunch.
Let me just tell you, agenda item eight has been pulled from the agenda, it was pulled this morning, and so that will be back later, I believe.
What was number eight?
Number eight, the electric scooter.
Oh.
With that, then we're going to go ahead and break for lunch and we'll be back in, who knows when? I say 10 minutes, a half hour, say a half hour, it's an hour. I don't know when we'll be back, John. Just be ready for us.
Say half an hour.
Thank you for joining us again for our city council work session after our lunch break. We'll go ahead and get started with the agenda item number nine is Partnership Opportunities Program, Parks and Recreation Department. Parks and Recreation Department staff will provide council with presentation regarding Parks and Recreation Department's Partnership Opportunities Program and brochure and is seeking council input and direction. Council may wish to consider granting staff permission to distribute the Partnership Opportunity brochure to the community and begin actively seeking additional potential partnerships to accomplish the significant park system improvements for community use enjoyment. John?
Thank you, Mayor Blatt. Council members, good afternoon. John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director, and with me is...
I'm Kristin Daviavati.
Kristin works with me in the Parks and Rec Department and keeps me in line, so thanks for joining me, Kristin. In light of the ongoing park system needs, or some of the ongoing park system needs, and also the, just the general challenges of funding large capital items and needs in any particular fiscal budget, with the resource pie itself only being so big and many competing needs and interests, of course, staff has begun to implement a strategy that's in addition to incremental budgeting and stockpiling of resources over time and also applying for grant funding whenever possible, to also work to build some solid and trusting relationships in the community and then seek partnerships with these local businesses in an attempt to accomplish some big things together for the community. A couple of good examples of this coming to fruition to date are, first, our partnership agreement with Connections Credit Union for construction of the new Zoo Connections entrance and gift shop building at Zoo Idaho. If you've been by Second Street lately, you can see that that's well underway. We're waiting on the trusses for that building and then it will be, go up and the roof will go up and we'll finish off that building in pretty short order. So we're really excited about that. Another good example was, we were able to partner with Western State's CAT for development of a new Western State's CAT pathway which connects Zoo Idaho's lower and upper levels and provides ADA accessibility. Staff has been working in conjunction with Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and Rave Communications to develop a compelling method of taking these efforts to the community more broadly with a more formal Partnership Opportunities Program. Today, we're extremely excited to present to council after much careful consideration and fine tuning over many, many months, our program brochure for available partnership opportunities. The brochure is designed to identify needs in the park system, capital projects and improvements, provide a high-level overview of each project, including facility amenity, facility and amenity characteristics, facts and figures, attendances, partnership benefits, and returns on investment. And then market these opportunities to local businesses and individuals, seeking partnerships to accomplish significant projects and improvements together for the community to enjoy and for mutual benefit. Staff is hopeful that with the successful precedence along with the Opportunities brochure, that we can inspire other potential partners to imagine what could be possible in working with the Parks and Recreation Department and the city to achieve some really great things for the community. I'd like to very briefly kind of take you through the brochure process and the brochure itself. So a couple of years ago, we did have kind of a year where it sat on the back burner for some reason or other that's escaping me, but anyway, the last year, this has been kind of, kind of on the back burner. Through the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and mine and Kristin's efforts, we kind of had a vision for some kind of very high-quality product that we could market to the community. And I couldn't quite put it into words. I could kind of give descriptions to Rave Communications what I was looking for and they, I think they did a fabulous job. I didn't want a staple product, I just thought that was unprofessional. We wanted something that was really slick, really professional, and they came up with what's called a gatefold design layout. And I provided you guys with kind of low-end 11 by 17 printer at the office, taped-together versions of this. And I've left a kind of a copy of the cardstock, high-quality finished version that we hope to develop if you guys like where we're going with this. And the mayor has that and he can distribute it around so you can get a feel. The copy you have doesn't really do it justice. It really, it really pops in the version that the mayor has. So we, over time, we developed, myself and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board developed the content and provided it to Rave Communications and kind of worked with them to bring their vision and their marketing expertise to help bring this product to life. And I just, I couldn't be happier with the way it turned out and we're just really hopeful that you guys like it as well. Basically, the brochure itself, it's, like I mentioned, it's a gatefold design, so it's just one product that keeps kind of folding out. We've got the cover page with, in my opinion, the two biggest, or two of the biggest needs in the park system would be the Ross Park Aquatic Complex slide and slide tower, which is currently, we are not allowing to be used because of safety concerns. And then the Riverside Golf Course Clubhouse, which is in desperate need of an update and replacement. As you open the brochure, it gives a, on your left, kind of a welcome to the Opportunities Program, and it gives a couple of precedent examples that I had mentioned to hopefully inspire some decision-makers, hey, that's great, you know? And they start thinking about what might be possible for them. You know, a high-level overview of some of the benefits of the program to a potential partner, and then some depictions of some things that we've been able to accomplish and some things that we'd like to accomplish. Before you open up, just to your left, is kind of a, just a brief overview of the Park and Recreation Department and park system itself, where we describe the park system and some of the major amenities and provide some neat pictures over there too, to kind of show folks what we've got going on currently in the city. And then what it does, and this is the gatefold design, is it opens up then to all of the partnership opportunities. Like I had mentioned, this was, these, this particular list and specific selections were developed and fine-tuned over many, many meetings of discussing needs and kind of the, I guess, the merit of one need versus another. And then also knowing is, you know, you can't have 30 things in here, it's got to kind of look nice. So we thought that these were the highest need and the most compelling needs in the park system. And I know you have this in front of you, I won't take the time to kind of go over all of the individual projects, but we try to provide a brief, and remember, this is very, very kind of brief and high-level, just hoping to spark interest and imagining what is, what could be possible in the hopes of getting a more of a one-on-one meeting with different businesses and presenting them a more detailed proposal of our partnership, much like we did and were successful with, with Connections Credit Union. So we've got improvements from Zoo Idaho to Ross Park to the idea of a community splash pad, a new clubhouse, a lodge up at the Nordic Center, maybe sprucing up and replacing some of our picnic pavilions, our playgrounds are, many of them are very, getting very aged, and maybe some naming rights for a playground might be of interest. And then the idea of a skate park system where very well-thought and strategically-placed maybe individual amenities or skateable art is kind of tempered through the park system in appropriate places where it's not disturbing to residents and, you know, you would have to be careful about where you select it, but instead of kind of one facility that is over here, well, then half the town lives over here, more of a distribution throughout the city of smaller opportunities and amenities, so. And then the, as you fold it back in, the back page just kind of gives a map of locations for some of the partnership venues. A lot of careful thought was put into providing, I guess, different financial levels of partnership opportunities to hopefully appeal to a wide range of potential partners and their financial capabilities. So we took careful care to include that as well. Staff is seeking council input and direction regarding our Partnership Opportunities Program and brochure, and if the council feels appropriate, if you could please consider granting staff permission to distribute the opportunities to the community and begin actively seeking additional partnerships to accomplish more significant park system improvements for the community to enjoy. With that brief overview, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have, and I would love to hear your input or if you feel any edits are needed or anything like that.
So I'm going to start over here. Rick, then Heidi, and I think I saw Claudia, Matt?
I missed the zip line.
Oh, yeah, the zip line was, we just felt there were... Oh, yeah, the zip line was, uh, we just felt there were more compelling things than that. Yeah, that's another, you know, there was a, there was a train idea for the zoo as well, but the, the zoo needs that we put in there, we thought were a little higher on the list than those, so, yeah.
Heidi.
I was just going to say, I think it's a great job and I am in full support of it, so I move that we authorize.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, is that okay? Seconds to proceed.
I just wasn't ready for that. All right. I had like 15 seconds out there. Stevens. Okay, we have a motion, uh, on the floor. Connie, a motion was made by Adamson and seconded by Stevens. Could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurie?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have plans to, uh, you know, try to kind of tap into kind of the spirit of optimism that we, we kind of are feeling in the community and, uh, if, if the chamber is so inclined, I would love to be a keynote for maybe one of their meetings and bring these, uh, to them, uh, you know, Rotary and other civic and service clubs. So, we have, uh, big plans to get the word out and try and market this. So, thank you so much for your support.
And what I was going to ask you, um, is, uh, were you going to also try to approach the local philanthropists in the area?
Yeah.
Or are you strictly going for like corporate?
No, I, I'll approach anybody and everybody.
Anybody with a checkbook, yeah.
That, that may be interested in. And, um, you know, probably goes without saying, I, I, you know, the council, you know, may kind of run in different circles than I do and maybe you guys might know some people that might be interested and, and can kind of use your, "Hey, you know, you might be interested in this" and maybe get it in front of some folks that might be interested. We'd really appreciate that, too.
So, John, will you do me a favor? When you get this actually completed without tape and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Get me, uh, seven copies so we can all.
Oh, absolutely.
Get one to the council.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Compliments to Greg, too.
Yeah, Greg did, they did a good job.
All right, super. We'll, we'll move on to agenda item number 10. It's East Bench Recreation Management Zone and Pioneer Trail System Access, Parks and Recreation Department. Parks and Recreation Department staff will provide city council with their, with a presentation regarding the BLM's East Bench Recreation Management Zone Plan and Pioneer Ridge Trail System. Staff is seeking council, council's input and direction regarding the potential future development and maintenance of trailhead and parking locations through the, through and on city property located at the old Alameda landfill, provide, provide access to landlocked BLM property and trails. Council may wish to consider directing staff to prepare an agreement between the city and BLM, allowing access through property and development of trailhead and parking areas at the Alameda landfill site for future council consideration.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Um, we have a couple of guests with us here as well. May I introduce yourselves?
You bet. Uh, my name is Bruce Alenick. I'm the Regional Administrator for the Department of Environmental Quality, as well as being an avid trail user within the area.
Lance Clark, I'm, uh, Outdoor Recreation Supervisor within Parks and Recreation.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Um, Mayor and Council, over the past handful of years, the BLM has been developing a, uh, management plan and environmental assessment for the East Bench Recreation Management Zone, which includes the Pioneer Ridge Trail System and consists of roughly 1,300 acres of multi-use recreational trails, as well as 20 miles of hiking, biking, horseback riding and limited ATV trail use. The ultimate goal of the plan being created was to create a, uh, second City Creek Quality Trail System on the East Bench at Pocatello. Some council members may recall, uh, back in 2017, Bruce Alenick initially, uh, presented the vision for the East Bench to council and council was, uh, supportive of those draft plans at that time. Uh, BLM has since begun developing a mountain bike racing course with assistance from Lance and the city's outdoor recreation division, which will sit at the base of the trail system above East Pocatello and is planned to be the highlight of the Idaho State Championship competitions for high school race teams and also serve as the home course for our local Pocatello Pioneers Race Team. BLM has now completed their East Bench Management Plan. Uh, the plan's adoption, however, is contingent upon establishing and providing access points to the mostly landlocked BLM property through development of trailheads and associated areas for parking. Uh, to this end, city and BLM staff have evaluated a number of potential trailhead and access locations adjacent to the East Bench BLM properties. Uh, staff consensus is that access to BLM property through city-owned property at the old Alameda landsite, uh, landfill rather, is very feasible. Um, several other possible access locations in the Highland area were also evaluated. However, due to a combination of inherent topography challenges, lack of adequate usable space, parking deficiencies, and most importantly, proximity to existing homeowner residence, uh, residences and those potential impacts, uh, the other located, locations studied were deemed not feasible or viable as primary access points. Um, private property access and parking locations were also explored and one or more of those could potentially prove to be viable in the future, subject to property owner consent and securing easements or land acquisitions from the owners. Regarding the city-owned property at the Alameda landfill, which you see here on the screen, uh, access point locations and parking, uh, has a nice ability at this site to be incremental and phased in over time. Uh, short-term plans would be to develop a small parking lot on the E, on the city property directly adjacent to Pocatello Creek Road and then provide a single-track trail that leads to BLM property. Longer-term plans would be to develop a two-lane access roadway beginning at Pocatello Creek Road and traveling north, utilizing switchbacks when needed to accomplish roadway width and manage grades. The long-term access roadway would feed then into a parking lot area, which could accommodate approximately 50 vehicles and provide direct sap, direct access to the BLM properties. The long-term roadway and parking lot could be constructed of gravel initially, uh, and/or asphalt at some point pending future funding resources. In either case, careful care would be taken to not impact the existing remedial actions at the old landfill and fencing or other barriers, uh, barriers provided to designate appropriate access areas. Some of the pros and cons of, of this, of this preferred site, uh, starting with the pros, it, it's city-owned land, uh, there are no private land order, uh, challenges for either short or long-term plans. Either plan could, uh, be proceeded with and accomplished quickly pending available resources. The short-term plan could be, uh, implemented initially while funding resources are acquired over time to eventually accomplish the preferred long-term plan in the future. Uh, also, city outdoor recreation staff has the capability to provide some absorbed cost assistance, uh, as in no additional cost to the city, in development of the short-term plan improvements through use of the trail building equipment provided in our Port of Health Trust agreement. And the lo- the location provides great flexibility for a well-designed long-term plan. Uh, the con, of course, being, uh, funding resources needed to accomplish construction of the roadway and parking lot area in the preferred long-term plan would need to be acquired over a period of time. Uh, in regards to funding resources, BLM and city staff plan to pursue, uh, grant funding through the state of Idaho's Parks and Recreation Trail Fund, as well as seek other funding sources with potential partners. Uh, for instance, a project like this would seem to align, uh, really well with the Port of Health Trust and their vision of, uh, and purpose of promoting health and wellness. Um, in addition, there all, it might be attractive to the Health Trust for, uh, connectivity possibilities to the wellness complex. So, that would certainly be one that would be explored. The United States Forest Service has also indicated an ability to provide some in-house cost-effective assistance in the development of trailheads, access roadways and parking lots in the long-term vision. Uh, the Forest Service has, uh, recently completed similar successful efforts at their Gibson Jack and North Fork Road, uh, up in City Creek locations. Um, one thing to note, uh, the BLM's management plan does not include an expectation of or request for dedicated city of Pocatello financial support. Uh, alternate non-city funding sources will be pursued to accomplish the plan elements. Um, rather, the BLM, what they're seeking is city council consideration to allow for access and trailhead locations through city property to open up those landlocked, uh, BLM properties and trails to the community. Um, Bruce, would you mind talking about, uh, the DEQ's, uh, views regarding remediation properties?
Certainly, yeah. Um, you know, as you know, you know, the city, uh, has acquired the, the liability, if you will, for the old Alameda city landfill that's up Pocatello Creek Road. And in the early 2000s, uh, remedial actions were conducted at that location, um, in order to mitigate any hazards that were, that were exposed to the public. And, um, I am, I am pretty, uh, proud to say that that's, that landfill in and of itself is one of the few landfills in the state that actually has responded incredibly well to those actions. And we've been watching that with the city over the last 20 years or so. There is a responsibility for the city to continue monitoring that location and there are monitoring wells throughout that location. And it'll probably go on for some time in the future every once in a while to check to make sure that that, that cap design i- is doing what it's supposed to do. That said, DEQ over the last several years, particularly over the last decade, has, has really taken an outlook from more remedial action to more redevelopment. In other words, there's been landfills throughout the state that have been, um, remediated and we are encouraging local municipalities then to figure out ways to re-engage that property in a way that makes it economically viable for the community once again. Um, we have programs such as the Brownfields Renovation Program in which we pour money into these types of facility, or these types of areas, including, you know, old gas stations and those kind of things, um, where we can actually find land uses that benefit the community once again, um, you know, to the benefit of everybody. And so, um, in this particular case, you know, if you think through it, it's very simple, is that the types of activities that, that would be promoted for an old landfill site would be hiking, biking, you know, the development of, of activities that don't, that don't disturb the cap or protective, uh, nature of what's there now and, um, allow for people to actually utilize that land again. And so, um, so DEQ, and I can give you several examples, there's a great, uh, landfill up in Quarter Lane in which a golf course is now built on top of it and it, it really is giving back to that community again. Um, and I see this one as being much the same way. And, uh, there's, when the city bought, bought, I mean, inherited, I don't know exactly all the pieces that were involved there at the time, um, but bought an entire section to, to encompass that landfill that's there. And there is land, the Archie Range being one of them, there is, or there are activities on that section that have been allowed to, uh, practice their, their, uh, their passions, if you will, off the landfill itself. Um, and I think those, those are very positive things. And that, in this proposal, right, that what we're looking at today is looking at the western section of that section of land that wasn't on the landfill to provide that access to BLM land. But I'd also encourage the city with, with the EQ over time to, to maybe re-engage the Brownfields program to see if they can develop even more, uh, of that landfill area in order to be productive and whether it's a park or whatever, it'd be, you know, it's yet to be determined, but, uh, we would fully support, you know, any type of re-engagement on that land or that section of land over the city to make it productive once again and make it something that the neighborhood or that, that whole Pocatello Creek drainage can be proud of rather than, of light. So, yeah, hopefully that summarizes it for you.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, in regards to maintenance responsibilities, uh, if developed, the city outdoor recreation staff would assume, uh, responsibility for maintaining the trailhead and parking locations in support of community access and enjoyment of the BLM lands, uh, much like the current responsibilities at City Creek Trails and Trailheads. Uh, maintenance would be accomplished within the current staffing structure and resources and through use of the, uh, trail building and maintenance equipment provided by the Health Trust. Lance and I have spoke at length about this and, uh, we view this as very manageable in light of having that, that wonderful equipment on hand to help us accomplish that in, in a pretty easy fashion. Another thing I was, uh, hoping you could cover, Bruce, is, uh, last time you gave the presentation, you guys have a really, uh, great vision of kind of future connectivity over a longer period of time. And, um, I know you and I have spoke about, um, our views that this, uh, we could, we see this as a real economic driver possibility for the community. I was hope, hoping, uh, we do have a new, couple of new council members. Would you mind touching on your overall, uh, vision for connectivity and, um, maybe some of your thoughts on the economics of it?
You bet. Can I borrow your laser pointer?
Of course.
I'm qualified to.
The cat toy?
Right. Um, yeah, you know, it's hard to believe that it's been four years since I last presented to the council. I mean, it, it time goes by really quick, um, or really slow depending on your vantage point. So, I, I've been working on this project for the better part of seven years, actually, and I was thinking that we'd be much further ahead than where we are today, but that's okay. I mean, I wanted to make sure that, that, uh, the planning for this and you, with our federal partners and with the city and, and other local interests, um, we do it right and do it deliberately. And, uh, so that's a cool thing. Um, also, I'd, I'd like to acknowledge at this point, before I actually talk about the longer-term vision, is, is all the work that Hannah's been doing on the river visioning project. This actually, believe it or not, dovetails into that. Um, I've been asked to sit on the advisory board for the new position that, that Hannah helped secure through the Sagebrush Step Land Trust. Um, and that position is going to be looking at what can we do long-term in this valley to secure trust lands that would augment not only the river, but also the ridge lines around the city of Pocatello. Um, and, and at, at the expense of maybe calling it a ridge-to-rivers situation and borrowing from Boise, and I don't want to do that, but that's indeed what we are doing, is taking a look at, or what we'd like to do is take a look at our trail systems that are on, on the, the benches and on the ridge tops around the city of Pocatello and connect and create the connectivity between that and our river system and really try to elevate our entire ecosystem in this valley. Um, I don't think the proper management of these actually diminishes the, the ability or the, or the ecological value of these lands. In fact, I think it enhances it rather than, you know, just allow, you know, indiscriminate jeep trails to run up and down the, um, the, the mountainsides. It's much better to actually have a plan and to actually have, you know, something that you're working towards, the whole community's working towards to be proud of. So, so with that background, um, I just wanted to point out very quickly, um, what we're looking at here. And that future vision, you can see Pioneer Ridge, that BLM property is just on the very northern edge of, of what, of this map right here. Uh, the dotted red lines are those areas in which easements might be likely in the future if you had a proper entity working on those types of activities. That's a specialized deal and I think Hannah's found that out too, that unless you have people that are, that are, uh, engaged in land trust activities, it's very difficult for most of us tech heads or, or outdoor enthusiasts to really embrace those kind of ideas. So, therefore, taking a look at how this might integrate into the river visioning, uh, process, these red dotted lines are just those likely areas where there's just small private tracts of land that, that are in between federal parcels of land that might be, um, again, I'm not saying that these have to happen, I'm just saying that these are areas where there might be long-term tax benefits to some of those private land operators to engage in a bigger plan around the city of Pocatello. I liken this to the city of Helena, Montana. If you've ever had the opportunity to go there, um, they have an, uh, the situation's almost identical to Pocatello. They, the city's about the same size, they, they have about the same demographic, um, as well as the same topography almost. What they have going around the city of Helena is trust lands. They have, uh, the private property people realizing that not only are the tax benefits to their enterprise worthwhile, but the benefit to the entire community to create this kind of ecological ring around the city, uh, is something they all, all jumped on board with and really support. And so, I guess I look at that, having spent significant time up in Helena, Jeff knows that, both our sons went to Carroll College, um, I took a lot of look at, um, how they did this. And what they did is they started out with a plan and they engaged a trust, uh, agency to start weaving and knitting together these types of opportunities. So, in the, in summary, really, that- So, in summary, really, that Pioneer Ridge is just, would be the kind of northeast anchor for a larger system that would ring Pocatello. These large red circles here are those areas in which the trust might be able to focus on engaging landowners into possibly sharing in this vision. Once you get onto both BLM and Forest Service land, both on the Chinese and Blackrock side and on the Camelback side, you can see where there's a lot of existing trails there. We've also envisioned other trailheads that would leave city roads and then access federal or state lands above, up on the benches here, similar to what's happened over at City Creek. These trail systems then reach a bottleneck down in the gap, and there are also very narrow pieces of private property that can connect the federal lands on the south end of the gap and the north end of the gap, and ring around into, and eventually meeting up with the Gibson Jack and the Scout Mountain Trail System, and then back to City Creek. So you can see, this would be about, you know, all toll, about anywhere between 50 and 150 miles worth of ecological trail development, if you will, to protect at least some tracts of land, that are typically not buildable, by the way, I mean, these are not highly desirable building sites, but they would be highly desirable tracts of land that would connect all the public lands with private land. So that's kind of the general vision, that's something that, again, tied with the Sagebrush Stepland Trust and the river visioning, not just trying to look at it in a siloed way, but trying to look at a big-picture way of how, what Pocatello might look like in anywhere from a decade from now to the future, so. I don't know if that's a good overview of it.
Yeah, no, that's great. Staff also wanted to provide counsel, or, I'm sorry, to provide the community with an opportunity to be made aware of, and provide some input on the potential use of the Alameda site. And a fair amount of public input was received, and this input has been provided to council for your reference. Staff is seeking council input and direction regarding the potential use and future development of trailhead and parking locations at the old Alameda landfill, to provide access to landlocked BLM properties and trails within the East Bench Management Zone Plan. If appropriate, council may wish to consider directing staff to prepare an agreement between the city and BLM, allowing for access and development of the city-owned Alameda site for future consideration by council. I think Bruce and I, and Lance, and BLM staff feel that, share the opinion that with some limited infrastructure and limited impact to the city and residents, interconnectivity of trails with adjacent systems on BLM lands can be achieved, which would facilitate development of one of the premier trail use sites in the state for enjoyment of the community. So with that, I do have another attachment, and Bruce and Lance and I would be happy to answer any questions, but we would love to seek some council input, and if council feels appropriate, maybe some further direction on this.
So Roger, and Claudia, Linda?
I think I've got a couple of my questions answered just in the presentation. It's evident that some of the Highland parking that was proposed early on has given way to this plan. There was short-term and long-term parking. As somebody that has been in other places, short-term means the day run, long-term means maybe overnight, but I think you're talking about short-term plan, long-term plan.
Correct. That wording has been confusing, I think, to the public, too, we're not building a campground. It's going to take us a long while to get to a bigger day-use area.
Yeah, so, anyway, that was some things. We've received some communication in here, and I think it's probably important, just because of clarification. Has the North Bannock Fire Group been contacted about this, because this is kind of in their protection area?
They have not thus far, you know, if we get approval to move forward with an agreement, we'll work with them. But, you know, the additional, I guess, danger to the area has been perceived as minimal.
Okay. So, the person that wrote us an email wondered, they're worried about homeless people camping in there. If it's used a lot, I would think you'd discourage homeless being in there, but I need to raise that question. Also, motorized incursions into that area, because there are people that take motorcycles and four-wheelers where they're not supposed to. What provisions might there be, and eventually this becomes a bike trail?
We would implement basically the same things we do at City Creek, QC Creek, our other trailheads that lead to non-motorized use, including restricted width entrances, bolsters, rocks, posts, you know, seasonal gates, a system like that. We do the same thing we do everywhere else with the same issues.
Okay. An issue was raised about, and I take it that they were worried the gates that are used to keep cattle in might be left open, are there any of those up there?
I think that was specific to another location where there are cattle, specifically the East Chubbuck Road extension that leads to the McNapp property, they run cattle on that property. Kind of, the ancient days included that as a primary location, but that's not on this.
Okay, and is that a point, there's a parking lot that was shown in one of these off of Chubbuck Road, is that on the slate for someday sometime, or is that just off the chart?
There's still a lot of options remaining, where public, you know, City of Pocatello property or private property that's up for development touch the BLM that would make excellent trailheads, but the BLM can't build the trail system and tell they get somebody to bite first and provide some access. We would definitely like to provide multiple access points, and perhaps even a better access point in the future, but those points can't, you know, we can't get a developer to build a trailhead to a system that doesn't exist. The city has to be the first mover.
Roger, just a couple of additional comments adding on to Lance. We really took careful consideration on, I guess, impact to existing residents, some of the, maybe the smaller-scale access points in and around the Highland area. We really kind of backed away from trying to create more of a central location that just wasn't going to be impactful to the residents. It's kind of out away from homeowners for the most part. And Lance was mentioning, kind of, Chubbuck Road Extended, help me, Lance, doesn't it?
Venture way, yes.
Venture way, and that two-and-a-half-mile road, I think it is. There are some opportunities up there, but again, you're into maybe future negotiations with private landowners for, you know, a big space of land for a parking lot or this type of thing, so, maybe in the future.
Theoretically, if this is developed, a developer might find an enhancement to their development by providing this as an access point off of that development?
This is, yeah, this is the hope, but it's hard to sell when the trail system doesn't exist.
Yeah, so, I understand that. Two last things. One, have you considered, and I think you have, but you've got to tell me, wandering, people wandering onto private lands, because there's quite a bit of private lands that border some of this?
Yeah, the hope, so that's already happening, you know. Basically, we have a fence around the landfill cap, or the landfill property, and there's a whole trail system that wanders the outside of that fence in existence. We're hoping to draw those people onto our property and concentrate that impact, and all of the neighbors that are currently getting recreationalists driving through their neighborhood looking for a way to access those trail systems, we would like to point them to a proper access point. We hope it draws attention away from the neighborhood.
You see, this project is a funneling of the people who are searching to get to a place that's definite in terms of not intruding on these properties.
I think one of the comments that you received was from Treus Ridge, you know, where people were driving up that road looking for a place to access the BLM land. And, you know, I think once people understand that if you give them an access point, it takes all of that private property trespassing away, you know, gives them a proper place to access BLM, so.
And the last one that was in the long list here...
It's a good list!
Is about emergency vehicles, because anytime you've got people riding bikes, you've got bike wrecks, just like car wrecks. So how would emergency vehicles access?
Yeah, we have a very good template with the City Creek management area for providing access gates that swing for emergency vehicles. They restrict, you know, the public use to the size and type of vehicle we want, that emergency responders have access or ability to open and access via ATV motorized vehicle the like.
And you have a lot of that access already existing, that infrastructure up by the water tanks up there, that actually then dovetail with the existing two tracks that are on that BLM property. BLM has not made a decision on what to do with those two tracks, and I've been working with them to try to create kind of a base infrastructure for motorized access up there, limited, but get rid of the old erosion-prone, straight-up-and-down two tracks, and create a system up there that allows for emergency vehicle access, as well as limited motorized. But that's coming down the road a little bit, so.
Well, I felt it was my due diligence to raise these questions that were raised with us. I think it's great, I was here when you presented in 2017. Anything that is an enhancement to what we have as a natural resource that drives our community, I'm all for it. So, you know, you've answered, I think, adequately all the questions that were raised in some of this.
Yeah, it's challenging to put out a one-page summary that answers everyone's questions about who what and when.
Well, I understand, you know, people have heard the horror stories of other things that happen on private property, and they want to do their diligence with their private property, so, I understand that.
I'm just glad somebody read the proposal, you know, sometimes you put "out for public information," and it kind of languishes. This was, you know, a pretty solid response.
Well, we've been forced to read the proposal, because we've been getting so many emails about something we didn't know was really that far along. So, but I just want to say, you know, I think this is a good plan, I understand that it's an evolving plan, and it makes some use of BLM land that might not be available without a city BLM partnership.
Claudia?
Oh, sorry. So I had those questions, too, from the emails, but, and I know this is going to sound stupid to most of you, but, where is this old Alameda landfill exactly? Pocatello Creek and what?
Just above the intersection with Parks Road.
Okay.
You know, where Parks cuts across to Buckskin?
Yes.
It's maybe half a mile up on the line.
Okay, okay, all right, I was trying to figure that. And then, as I'm looking at this map, not this map, but the other map, not the...
The long view?
This one. So Ridgewood past Granite is a private road, but that's not in play or anything, right, at all? Okay.
No, I...
Because that road is a big contentious thing, so...
Yeah, this is well above that, leave me, I know.
All right, good, because I'm like, yee, don't want to kick that hornet's nest.
Yeah, we want the county to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, Rick, or, I mean, and, I'm sorry, and then Chris.
I want to thank you guys, too, because this is really exciting. I know I've been talking with you, Bruce, for years about this, and to see us move forward even a little bit is really exciting. I had similar questions, you know, obviously, we all got the same emails, but back to the fire issue for a second, I mean, you answered the question about whether you've made contact with Bannock, North Bannock Fire Department, and I just wondered, would it make sense, you know, rather than waiting to start talking to them? And I don't know if it does or not, but I just thought I'd put that out there.
I mean, yeah, it's worth reaching out before we go much further.
Yeah.
Now that the, you know, the plans, I see a lot of this, then yes. If the answer is this, then no.
Right, because I guess there were specific concerns about their capacity or their ability to serve that area, and I think if you could allay some of those fears that people have, because they feel like, you know, that's who serves their area, but they're pretty far away from them, so, and with the introduction of, well, I don't know if introduction's the right word, but with possibly an increase in motorized vehicles, if people are going to be riding ATVs, and the focus is mainly on non-motorized, but the emails we're getting are saying, you know, they know there's going to be some motorized vehicles out there, too, and their concern is that that could then spark fires. You guys feel that that's a pretty low...
Yeah, I think the same, you know, it's kind of the same answer for the concentrated impact. When you take an ATV rider who's out searching for a way to get to the public land by driving through the sagebrush, that's the risk, you know, we already have the risk. When you put them on a prepared surface with a defined path, you know, vegetation-free path, to a designated loop...
You're actually lowering...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, that part of the plan is not part of this, I mean, BLM has yet to address the motorized piece of this. The ongoing motorized piece, the emergency vehicle piece, is one that's easily addressed, but it's the ongoing motorized use that they have to do a next phase to go take a look at. So that's coming down. This is just for the building the base trail. That red trail you see there is a non-motorized trail, it's eight miles of non-motorized trail that stays at elevation around Pioneer Ridge. And so, I don't want to say that's off the table, it's just their decision at some point in the future to address the motorized.
Yeah.
Our hope would be that it would be multiple use, and maybe we can bridge all those pieces together to make a really cool park up here, but that has yet to be seen, so.
And I really like the idea of kind of looking at Helena and what they have done, because, I mean, I think that's a great model for us to look at. I was struck by your comment about, from DEQ perspective, shifting from remediation to kind of redevelopment, and I really like that idea, making it more of a sort of, you know, positive, productive land use, rather than just kind of watching, covering over and watching a problem.
Right.
So I'm excited about that. I had one more question, but it completely went out of my head, so.
Okay, we'll think about it for a minute, we've got Chris, and then Heidi, then Roger, then Rick.
So, I'm assuming in a lot of these urban, wild interface areas, I mean, BLM gets involved with firefighting, whether they want to be or not, and so I'm assuming that part of the answer to the fire issue is, if there were a fire started in the city-owned portion, given the fact that it accesses BLM land, that it wouldn't be North Bannock, it wouldn't just simply be stranded on their own with no assistance of any sort.
And then, Mr. Man, I think I heard, a council may wish to consider, or, early on in the presentation, and so, if we need a motion to, I'm making a motion, that we direct staff to proceed, I'm not sure I can articulate exactly what they're supposed to do to proceed, but to proceed as they have explained they would like to proceed, so I make that motion.
Looks like a prepare an agreement between the city and BLM for access through the property.
Right, yes.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Stevens, and a second by Adamson, but before we vote, we've got three other people that want to talk.
Heidi's made a motion.
Okay, Heidi's out, then, she's done what she's done, Roger?
I was just going to mention, did I believe I read in the North Bannock Fire District, they were looking at putting a station up Pocatello Creek Road, so, you know, a substation of some sort. Second of all, our experience record has been that oftentimes, in this area that's under the North Bannock, our fire department gets there before they do under our MOU.
And the BLM's shortly behind. We've had the unfortunate experience lately of that, and it's all hands-on debt. We've had the unfortunate experience lately of that, and it's, it's all hands-on deck, and the response has been excellent.
You know, I mean, it's, it's somewhat addressed in the, the mutual agreement that we have between the city and the, and the North, uh, Bannock Fire District, and even with BLM, you know, it's this, uh, urban rural interface plan.
I know.
Rick? Yeah, Rick?
So, I am assured then, Bruce, that you're confident that the land till cap is secure forever?
Forever. That's a loaded question. Forever.
Yeah, that's a yes or no?
It was designed to provide protection and, and shun water to prevent percolation through the old waste bed, and, um, that was designed for a 50-year life. Um, the city's required to monitor for at least 30 years and then reassess at the end of that, and that's about in another five or six years. Um, so, that cap, you know, eventually that garbage disintegrates and disappears, right? But, that, that cap is designed to be there for as long as it needs to be there, as long as the monitoring shows that, that the, the action is doing what it's supposed to do. So it's not meant to be there forever, but any activity, I would say, over the next 20 years should be consistent with keeping that cap in place. And again, even walking on the cap, if it's designed correctly, there might be modifications the city might have to do in order to allow that to happen, but you might even be able to put trails on top of the cap, you know, as it exists right now. But again, that's yet to be found, and we're happy to partner with the city DEQ is to provide, you know, maybe some additional funding to look into what those long-term plans are, but the city hasn't entertained that quite yet. But as it is right now, this proposal doesn't even affect that cap at all.
So that was a no?
Yeah, I mean, but nothing's designed forever. That's why I'm always hesitant when you use that word.
When you talk about access, are you talking about 45, 40-foot wide easement to get to this BLM property, or what exactly are we talking about?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, and I want to guess here, John, that it's about 400 yards from the edge of the existing fence on that section to that ravine on the far western edge of the landfill. So there's quite a big swath there, and the idea was, was to work with BLM and the city to, to put a trail, um, that would work its way up that 400-foot swath away from that landfill cap on the west side.
Would it be essentially a way that would keep people from pioneering off of that trail?
Well, that's, that would be Lance's...
Um, the, the fortunate thing about this is it's a phased program where we'd start small and build out, which should allow the, the problems to manifest themselves at a reasonable level. If we were to jump in tomorrow and build a 50-lot paid system, the problems would probably be, you know, uh, come hard and fast at us, but where we're proposing, you know, a, a five-to-10-car parking area with a 48-inch tread trail up through it, I, I feel like that'll allow the problems to slowly come out of the woodwork, and we will then be able to know, do we need to move this chain-link fence, you know, between us and the cap? Is some buck and rail with some signage going to be adequate, you know? Do we need to drop a couple boulders? Uh, we should be able to kind of piecemeal that as we roll it out.
How does all this line up with the existing road that goes from the main road up there to the Archer's, Archer's clubhouse?
Different road.
There's a fence across there. Where is it in line with any of that? I can't see it on this map.
It's actually using the tread of the old landfill road, which is a separate road that runs parallel in the ravine as that one goes up to the Archery Range.
It's off to the east, or west, are they?
It's to the west, just slightly, and, uh, yeah.
The Archery Range utilizes the land on the east side of the cap. We're proposing to stay on the west side, so we basically...
But the access from the main road is the same one, just takes a different...
Uh, it turns at the same part and immediately branches off, right?
I think this map right here kind of shows it.
It's an old double track. You wouldn't even notice it unless you were up there and you went, oh, where does that go? It used to go to the...
It shows the road to the Archery Range.
Correct.
And the other one just comes off.
And it would be that tread that would be used, and then at some point on that road, as you go up towards the landfill, to cut back to get up to the, in a nice even grade that would get you up on top of there, so.
Okay, Linda, did you think of your question?
I did, um, actually.
It's a softball, though, right?
Yeah, you just said something that made me think of what it was. So one of the other issues that was brought up in the email was, was about, uh, concerns about parking, and what you were just saying, you know, about kind of starting off slow so that we can see how it works and not have all the problems come hard and fast, you know? But the comment that I read from somebody was that even though there is no trailhead and no parking lot and everything now, there's people going out there and using this, and they're parking, and, um, they're just parking on the side of the road wherever they can, and that there's already a lot of that happening. So my concern is, you know, I understand what you're saying, sort of starting out slow and, and building up, but is it going to be enough if, if everybody's sort of, you know, the minute it opens is ready to get out there, are we going to just already be overloaded before we even open almost?
I think that's a fair question, you know? I, I think buried in, in the plan is kind of, you know, Phase 2 would be some, a little more parking slightly further up the road, still in the valley below the cap, there's another flat spot. So there is kind of, you know, if this thing is a grand hit and we're, we're getting 25 cars, you know, every Friday morning out there, we do certainly have the ability to, you know, it's not five to 50. There are some intermediate moves we can make, and if that answers your question. Uh, I mean, if it's 50 cars on day one, and two, and three, you know, that's a great problem. I mean, congratulations!
Well, then we go to John's plan, and we sell naming rights to the new big parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, overly, you know, if our greatest concern is that this might be too successful, let's, let's, I'm willing to try.
I just want to make sure that we're, uh, you know, addressing the parking needs, because people are saying that they're already doing it, which indicates that there, there is an interest and that there'll be a lot of people looking for this, so.
Yeah, there's, there's probably three spots right now before you start getting weird, you know? Just taking that to 10 should be very helpful, and then there's probably five to 10 more that would be reasonably doable just upstream, and, yeah, we, we can work our way in if we have to.
I, I think long-term, it has the ability to expand easier than City Creek does, actually.
Yeah, City Creek's built out, you know, valley, only flat spot, we're, we're done, you know, which is why people park at Centennial Park more frequently, and we, we work with that.
Because that actually was one of the comments, and I didn't know if this was accurate or not, but the person who was talking about, you know, concerns about parking was suggesting that there was no way to add any, like, that there isn't any room there, um...
They might have been referring to where people park now, which is on neighborhood streets and at the dead ends of these cul-de-sacs, you know, up in the Highland area, that's what's happening, and so I, I took that as a reference to that, you know? And this kind of takes all that pressure off, hopefully, but it may add more, right? I mean, it's a very fair question.
That'd be, I mean, if we meet again next year and we're saying, how can we double the parking again, that's a, I'm willing to tackle that question next year.
And, well, again, I think a consideration is you're not talking about asphalt and parking curbs and stripes, and you're talking about a bulldozer leveling out a, a flat place that already exists, and that is neither horrifically time-consuming nor horrifically expensive, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the access road up is probably the big spend, whether you build a 50- or 75-car lot, you know, that, that's kind of all the same bulldozer, same day, yeah, order 20% more gravel.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
What about hygiene facilities?
That's a good question, uh, you know, they'll be better than City Creek's, which is almost none.
Which is what has me concerned.
Yeah, I, I think a vault toilet would probably be the solution. Uh, water is a scarce resource up there. We'd probably put in a, a CXT-style permanent restroom facility.
Which is what, $150,000?
Uh, the last one we put in was a double, and it was $38,000.
That's cheap.
And that's long-term, though. Again, this, this plan does not require that long-term build-out at this location.
Yeah, I mean, that's been the discussion there, there, yeah, I mean, so by the time we get to a, call it 50,000, there are about 500 a year to pump, so...
What do we do in the short term? Let people just wander into the bushes?
Well...
What's happening up City Creek?
Yeah, short-term really is just to allow access to the property, I mean, and then eventually consider the longer-term effects of what to do there. So again, it's keeping this parking lot small and access small first and see what happens, so.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, by Stevens and a second by Adamson. Connor, could you please call her on?
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Tita?
No.
Lurid?
Yes.
Bertaken?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Council.
Bring a, bring a, prepare a, an agreement, and we'll see it in a future meeting, then. Okay, thank you very much with that. Thank you, council, for being here today. Uh, with that, we are adjourned.